Due to the Governor's Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. At this point, we will take a moment to take a roll call of the council members in attendance. So please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Great. Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Mertz.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
Thanks. And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. All seven councilmembers are here this evening. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all keep your microphones muted, I would still like to welcome you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I have a brief announcement before we get into audience comments this evening. Before entering the public comment portion of our meeting tonight, I'd like to announce that the public hearing regarding the city's sale of a portion of the RV Park property at 650 First Avenue Northeast, which was originally scheduled for tonight's meeting, has been canceled and will not be conducted. And now we will be moving into audience comments. For those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. Keep in mind, no comments are allowed from the public regarding AB 8136 as this item is a quasi judicial closed record appeal. And City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicate a desire to speak this evening?
Thank you. Yes, we have three folks who signed up in advance. And give me a moment while I look to our green room and see our attendee list.
And while you're doing that, Tina, I will go through with some general comments for those that are going to provide comments this evening.
Thank you.
Please make sure you direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this isn't a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When you are recognized, unmute your microphone, state your name, address, relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. And please remute yourself when your mic, remute your microphone when you are done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizens' comments, both written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes these comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address this this evening. City Clerk, who is the first person on our list this evening?
Hi, thank you. I will read the, all three. I will start with Leah Misick. I'm unmuting you now. And then we'll proceed to David Hoffman and then Ann Fletcher. Leah.
Hello, good evening. Yeah, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Awesome. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Like I said, my name is Leah Misick, and I work for Climate Solutions, which is a regional clean energy nonprofit with the mission of accelerating clean energy solutions to the climate crisis. I also participated in Issaquah Community Conveting on Climate last fall, and I'm here to comment on the proposed electric vehicle readiness ordinance. We're really excited to see this type of ordinance being considered, and I want to thank staff for their work to bring this forward. We need to electrify our vehicles in order to meet Issaquah's climate goals. There's a lot of momentum on this front on all levels, and this is good and also necessary. Frankly, we're behind on climate action, and we need to reduce emissions rapidly. Given current policy and business actions, we know we will be seeing more and more EVs, and this transition will be quick. Washington State has adopted a zero emissions vehicle mandate, which requires an increasing amount of sales of EVs. Puget Sound Energy is working on a transportation electrification plan. Major automakers, including GM recently, have announced that they will exclusively produce EVs by 2035. EVs will also achieve upfront price parity in just a few years, and they are already much cheaper to operate. So given all of this, we need to ensure we're taking simple but important steps to ensure the transition is not hindered, and people do not miss out on this opportunity when it's time for them to purchase a vehicle. And right now, not having a place to charge at home is consistently cited as one of the main barriers to purchasing an EV. So as I mentioned, I was a participant in Issaquah's Community Conveting on Climate, and what I heard was a strong desire for Issaquah to lead and act quickly. We only have about a decade to have our emissions. This EV readiness ordinance is an important step that really needs to be taken now. Each year that we wait, more people will be in buildings that will potentially require expensive retrofit to allow for adequate EV charging. The buildings we build now will last for decades, and they need to be future-proofed. We would like to see this ordinance passed as soon as possible so we can consider other important climate actions that will also support community or health in our future. So we strongly support this ordinance. It is an important step along the way of climate action. It will ensure people who live in multifamily buildings with parking will be able to access EVs. We think the proposed language around affordable housing is really well-done. Kudos to staff, and it ensures that lower-income people won't be precluded access to cheaper and cleaner vehicles while at the same time not adding cost to affordable housing construction. I want to note that we strongly believe that single-family homes and townhomes should be included in this ordinance. I understand there are different interpretations as to what mayor may not align with state law, and given that legal opinions are not consistent, I urge you to simply take the lead and suggest the best possible policy. I was excited to hear comments from some councilmembers in the last meeting on this topic that emphasized their desire to lead and include single-family homes and townhomes under the EV readiness requirement. That would truly be the best policy. It makes no sense to include a garage or a parking spot in a home and for it not to be capable of level-two EV charging without expensive retrofitting. So just to reiterate, we think this is an important policy. It's a step along the way of Issaquah meeting its climate goals. It's a smart policy. EVs might be a small percentage of vehicles in this moment, but that's about to change drastically and well within the early lifetime of new buildings. So we want to see this ordinance pass without delay, and we hope to see the city take further action to require EV readiness for all building types. Thank you again for considering this important matter, and I hope you'll move forward tonight with a strong EV readiness ordinance. And also while I'm here, I just wanted to express a thank you to the city for supporting the Clean Fuel Standard at the state legislature on behalf of itself in K4C. It's really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Leah. City Clerk, who's next on our list this evening?
David Hoffman has joined by computer. I'm going to elevate you to, as a panelist, in case you would like to have your camera on while you address council. And there you are.
Thank you. Yeah, sure, I'll turn my camera on. Thank you, Mayor Polly, Council President Hunt, Deputy President Ray, and members of the council. My name is David Hoffman, and I'm with Puget Sound Energy. My address is 355 110th Avenue Northeast in Bellevue. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Item 7 on your agenda, which is the EV charging ordinance. Puget Sound Energy supports the development of electric vehicle or EV charging infrastructure. PSE had the first customer-facing electric vehicle program in Washington State, and we've continued to expand our EV program offerings over the past six years. Most recently, PSE has installed a public charging station in Lacey with plans to add similar stations at several other locations in our service territory. PSE also supports personal charging stations and runs, personal charging stations and runs pilot programs to better understand the impact of EV charging on the electric grid. As more local government fleets and individuals invest in EVs, PSE is proud to partner on the infrastructure to make these changes possible. As you know, in January, PSE announced our Beyond Net Zero Carbon Pledge. The pledge commits PSE to reduce carbon emissions from our operations, our electric supply, and local natural gas distribution business, but doesn't stop there. The pledge also commits PSE to help address carbon emissions from other sectors like transportation, through electrification, supporting the use of low-carbon fuels, and building the infrastructure we need to make this transition. The draft ordinance before you this evening is one way Issaquah can plan for a clean transportation future. In an effort to make this ordinance effective to your goals, we would suggest making permitting for EV chargers an over-the-counter process. Administrative backlog is an ongoing and challenging barrier to the, to the completion of many proposed EV installations. In our experience, an over-the-counter permit dramatically reduces the time necessary to install an EV charger. PSE appreciates the many decades of partnership with the city of Issaquah and our customers who work, live, and play in Issaquah. We're building a clean energy future together, and we think, and we thank you for the opportunity to comment on the EV charging ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. City Clerk, who else do we have signed up this evening? Oh, come on, this is super fun for me. You're on mute.
I sure am, thank you. Sorry about that. If anyone in our attendees area would like to speak or address council under public comment here, please press star three. I do have Ann Fletcher next. And Ann, you have been unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me. Okay, great, thank you. This is Ann Fletcher, resident and People for Climate Action member. Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to be here tonight. I'm heartened to see the city taking this step toward electric vehicle charging. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Okay. I appreciate the thorough package and the process the staff, the administration, the council, the Environmental Board, and the Planning Policy Commission have completed leading up to your consideration of this ordinance. I am generally in favor of the city council approving this ordinance as a significant step toward meeting our climate goals. I'd like to see you consider some minor amendments and direction to the administration from the recommendations of the Environmental Board and the Planning Policy Commission. Here's my input. Have several ways to achieve cost neutrality for EV charging in affordable housing development because it is development-specific and challenging to predict. Number two, having enough actual charging infrastructure in place may be more important than having the full number of parking spaces and landscape amenities. Having the recommended percentages of EDSE and EV-ready units will be much cheaper than retrofitting later. It will provide lower-income people with the economic benefits of using electric vehicles, and it will reduce carbon emissions. Number three, EV-ready is closer to full use and better than EV-capable if any trading is needed to reduce costs. Moving on to the single-family issue, many of those providing input would like to see single-family housing included in an EV charging ordinance. They wonder how likely is it that a single-family home builder would sue for having to include a fairly inexpensive EV-ready infrastructure? As the demand increases, builders will want to be competitive. Still, most people are not willing to take this risk, given the city attorney's interpretation of the state building code. So please be proactive about correcting this state rule by recommending the city, one, automatically revise the ordinance once single-family is allowed; two, revisit this ordinance annually for updates in a rapidly changing sector; three, work with other government bodies to request the state Building Code Council allow single-family EV charging; and four, lobby the state to change the single-family exception. So after considering the affordable housing issue and recommending ways to correct the single-family exclusion, I urge you to approve this ordinance. I would celebrate the city's first significant action to meet our climate goals. And then let's redouble our efforts to achieve the many other needed environmental and climate goals we have here in Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. City Clerk, do we have anyone else present or indicating a desire to speak this evening?
We do not.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank those that came tonight. We had several speakers speaking about one of our ABs this evening on our EV, our draft EV ordinance. Thank you very much for coming in. This is a reminder to the general public or anybody that's watching, written comments can always be submitted at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. Citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. I'm going to go over to Council President Hunt right now and see if she has any email comments that she would like to summarize on any of tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive several emails from community members on multiple topics this evening, and while we are doing virtual meetings, I am summarizing those comments. On the electric vehicle charging ordinance, AB 8066, we received multiple emails. One requested that we add in the single-family requirement, also that we simplify or eliminate the cost-neutral, affordable provisions, but rather just require the same, the same charging infrastructure in affordable housing as in the other housing types. And then also said that since the electric vehicle charging and parking are interrelated, this might be prudent to include these changes in the Title 18 overhaul. We received comments in support from one of the speakers this evening, so I won't resummarize those comments. And then we also received comments asking around the sales and demand in our region for electric cars and citing the Wall Street Journal article from a different region about sales and demand of electric vehicles. And then on two items on consent, we also received feedback on AB 120, which is new and replacement purchases of paving equipment. We received an email commenting that the more we build and develop, the more we have to maintain, and the more these costs will be coming up. And then AB 8149, which is the RH2 lease agreement, had some questions around the benefits and the rationale for subletting this office space. And that concludes comments that were emailed to council on topics for tonight's agenda. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on the agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and so I will call each councilmember by name for the reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I have a couple of quick reports, and please let me know if I'm choppy at all. My connection seems to be a little choppy on this end because I've got someone next door watching the Gonzaga-Baylor game, but I can tell them to stop watching if that helps, so just let me know. First one is for the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council. We met on Wednesday, March 24th, at 1:00 p.m. I wanted to highlight that we received an interesting presentation from King County on their Health Through Housing Implementation Plan. And just as a quick reminder, Health Through Housing is the county's plan to fund the acquisition of single-room settings like hotels throughout the county for those who are experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness. And this is using that 0.1% Affordable Housing taxing authority that came from the passes of House Bill 1590. I wanted to make sure to mention that the county said in the meeting that they were committed to working very closely with local jurisdictions as they begin this work. I thought that their plan personally was very thoughtful, and so did the Sound Cities Association Caucus, but I would like to share the memo with all of you, so I'll be emailing that out shortly. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go through it with you. I thought it was a detailed memo. And if there are any community members listening in who would like a copy of that memo or would like to chat about it, I'm also open to that as well. And the next meeting of the committee is scheduled for Wednesday, May 19th, at 12:00 p.m. And then Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors met also on the same day, Wednesday, March 24th, at 3:30 p.m. Nothing of particular importance to report back, but I did want to mention that Mayor Polly and I will be attending a series of workshops this summer. That's just being put together now on the future of the alliance and on the future of the Lake Taps Reservoir Project, which will certainly be of importance to councilmembers here and to the city of Issaquah. So we'll be sure to share more details on that series as soon as possible and as soon as we get those. And the next board meeting for Cascade Water Alliance is Wednesday, April 28th, at 3:30 p.m., and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Next up is Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember De Michelle. On Thursday, April 1st, I attended the monthly meeting of the Healthier Here Governing Board. We heard an extensive report on the performance metrics that are in development for approval by the board. We also received a legislative update, an equity update, and an update from Public Health on resurgence of COVID cases. And then a meeting of Eastside Transportation Partnership is scheduled for this Friday, April 9th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Very quick report in that there is a meeting next Friday for the Chamber of Commerce, but the agenda has not been set, so that's all I got for you. That concludes my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Goodman here. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet this Thursday, April 8th, at 4:00 p.m., and there are, there's nothing remarkable on the agenda. There are some standard reports out, such as PFAS, and I will report back on those. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will meet April 14th at 10:00 a.m., and I do not yet have a set agenda yet, but I understand that the committee will be reviewing grant applications, and also we should be getting a quarterly report from Visit Issaquah. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Next up, Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz, GoZags. Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, April 1st. No actions were taken. GoZags. Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, April 14th, from 7 till 9. It's a little bit of an unusual situation because the main meeting may be canceled, and so there is talk of potentially taking emergency action on an opinion regarding King County rates and fees. This is pretty new information, as of the end of last week, that there might, there might be an advisory opinion taken from PEC. What I would like to suggest is if we find ourselves somehow at the end of the evening this evening with lots of time on our hands and not much to talk about, that I would bring this up at the good of the order. Otherwise, if people have opinions about this subject, they can feel free to contact me, and I will, I will endeavor to share that view with PEC. That concludes my report. GoZags.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Next up, Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The King County Growth Management Planning Council met on Wednesday, March 31st. On the agenda of import was an update on the 2021 county-wide planning policies. There was a review of the draft policies and a direction to release the draft policies to the public for comment. Additionally, there was a review of the Urban Growth Capacity Report. The overview included the approach for the new requirements and initial county-wide findings. Again, the direction to staff was to release the report to the public for comment. And there was an informational packet on the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendations. And we had a, received an updated schedule for the balance of the year. This is a big year for GMPC with the county-wide planning policies. And that is all, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council met on March 18th, and Wyra 8 is the technical name for our watershed. The major agenda items were a discussion of the 2020 client survey, a presentation on King County's Clean Water Healthy Habitat Initiative, our 2020 progress report, and then also an update on the Wyra 8's recent work on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the next meeting of the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery will be May 20th, 2 to 4:15 p.m. There's also a Coconie working, Coconie ILA meeting this week on April 7th, which I will report back on after that meeting. And then lastly, on March 12th, the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee met with staff. This is an ad hoc committee of councilmembers that meet with staff to discuss the Title 18 work, which is our land use code, and the efforts to improve that land use code. We met with the Community Planning and Development Department Director, and we also met with the consultants, and we discussed the progress on Title 18 and how it's gone so far with those, those individuals. And then we also briefly got an update on where the signed code is through the process and public engagement on that topic. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item is the mayor's report, and I have a few things tonight, a couple of announcements and a couple of proclamations. So first off, there will be an executive session this evening for deliberations related to Agenda Bill 8136 per RCW 42.30, 0.140 per N2. The item is expected to last 60 minutes and may be extended if needed, and action is anticipated in open session. So one of my favorite parts about April is that there is an Earth Day proclamation. So whereas the global community faces extraordinary challenges such as climate change, global health issues, environmental degradation, food and water shortages, and economic struggles, and whereas local communities can lead the way in taking steps to protect and preserve our natural resources and wildlife by encouraging energy and water conservation, waste reduction, environmentally sound land use, pollution prevention, habitat restoration, and non-drive-alone transportation choices, and whereas Earth Day offers residents of all ages a unique opportunity to make a personal commitment to protect the quality of all life in Issaquah for generations to come. I urge all residents to celebrate this special observance and further to pledge to take action together so that we can contribute to a healthy environment and make Issaquah an even greater place to live, work, and play, learn, and to visit. I proclaim April 22nd, 2021, to be Earth Day in the city of Issaquah. I'm going to add a few additional comments. So the city is encouraging families and individuals to celebrate Earth Day all month long with activities and actions that anyone can pursue on their own or pick from a list of socially-distanced events that can be found on the city's website. For example, the Downtown Issaquah Association is hosting Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day, where residents are invited to help with trash pickup, vegetation maintenance, and flower planting while wearing masks and being socially-distanced. Between April 20th and May 2nd, the Friends of Lakes Mammert State Park will host an educational Celebrate the Earth Walk. Recology will help residents learn which items go in which bins at an informational webinar, and you can sign up to receive a free rain barrel or compost bin from the city at a socially-distanced pickup event. These and other Earth Month events can be found online at issaquahwa.gov/earthmonth. Issaquahwa.gov/earthmonth. I'm also going to do a proclamation today on Sexual Assault Awareness Month, where a Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community, and whereas in Washington State, 45% of women and 22% of men report having experienced sexual violence in their lifetime, and whereas in King County, more than 7,100 adults and children received sexual assault assistance from organizations with programming for sexual assault victims last year, and whereas working together as a community, we can alleviate the trauma of sexual violence by ensuring supportive resources are available to all survivors while standing up to harmful attitudes and behaviors that contribute to sexual assault. I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and join advocates in communities across King County in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Together, we commit to a safer future for all children, young people, adults, and families in our community. I proclaim April 2021 to be Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Couple more announcements. I hope you can join us for the next Recovery Task Force meeting, which will be on April 6th. And thanks for the American Rescue Plan Act. The city of Issaquah anticipates it will receive 8.6 million in federal funds that must be spent through the year 2024. Under the Act, cities are authorized to use these federal funds to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic, to cover the costs as a result of a public health emergency, to replace lost, delayed, or decreased revenues due to COVID-19, to address the negative economic impacts of the pandemic, and to make necessary investments of the pandemic, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. During its April 6th virtual meeting, the Issaquah Recovery Task Force will discuss guiding principles to help inform how our city spends these funds. We want to hear from the community and hope that you will join us. You can find the meeting login information on our website meeting calendar, or you can contact my office for assistance. And checking, I think this is the last one. Okay, last one. Issaquah Community Vaccine Partnership Update. The Issaquah Vaccine Community Partnership met earlier today for our weekly coordination meeting. Our focus remains helping our eligible community members to get fully vaccinated. A drive-up mass vaccination site is now ready for operation in Issaquah, and we plan to share some exciting news later this week. Meanwhile, supporting our most vulnerable residents remains a top priority. Issaquah is partnering with Eastside Fire and Rescue to offer limited mobile COVID-19 vaccination clinics to eligible residents who are not physically able to travel outside of their home. Appointments are dependent on available vaccine supply. If you are eligible for this mobile clinic, or you know someone who is eligible for this mobile clinic, or if you need special assistance, please call us at 425-837-3300. We are here to help. And that concludes the Mayor's Report for tonight. We will move on to the next item of business, which is the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any items from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business this evening? Not seeing anything. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to approve the consent calendar as it appears in this evening's agenda.
Thank you. And Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
Thank you very much. It has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote for, on the consent agenda?
Absolutely. We're going to start with Councilmember Goodman.
I.
Councilmember Hall?
I.
Council President Hunt?
I.
Councilmember Martz?
I.
Deputy Council President Ray?
I.
Councilmember Walsh?
I.
Councilmember De Michelle?
I.
Thank you. That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. We're now going to move into regular business, and the first item this evening is AB 8066, Amending the Issaquah Municipal Code and Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards Related to Electric Vehicle Charging. The request before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and this item was last before council at the February 9th, 2021 council study session. So I'd like to invite Megan Curtis Murphy, Senior Sustainability Coordinator, to introduce this item. Welcome, Megan.
And Madam Mayor, if I may make just a few comments before Megan starts with the item. Excuse me. This item was last before the council in February. I was absent from that meeting, but there was a concern expressed by several community members, members of our Planning Policy Committee, over comments that were made at the January discussion of this item regarding the work that the Planning Policy Committee has done, reviewing council items, and certainly the work moving forward. I just wanted to take a quick opportunity to clarify those comments and really share my appreciation for the work that the Planning Policy Committee has done on many difficult topics in my year and a half as the city administrator, and certainly over the last few months in their working very diligently on this topic along with the Environment Board. I think our, our citizen boards and commissions have tough jobs. The, the work that they do to provide good comment and feedback to the council is very important, and I wanted to just take this moment, Madam Mayor, members of the council, to recognize that good work and the important part that they play in these processes. So with that, I'll introduce Megan to take the item forward. Megan?
Thanks, the Administrator Bob Quitz, but I did see that in the chat, Councilmember Hall had asked to make a comment first. So Councilmember Hall, I'm not sure if it's about this particular AB before we start, or was it on the consent?
It wasn't. It was a quick comment. This is Councilmember Hall. It was just a quick comment on the consent calendar, but that's okay. No worries. We can move on.
Okay. Okay. Sorry I missed that. I had my talking points over top of the chat. My bad. Okay, we're up to me.
Okay. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, council members. I'm Megan Curtis Murphy, the Senior Sustainability Coordinator for the city, and I'm here this evening to talk about the electric vehicle charging proposal, which I last presented on to council in early February. So since that time, we've made some changes to the proposal and received feedback from the Planning Policy Commission, the Environmental Board, and community stakeholders. So the purpose of the meeting tonight is to seek council authorization to adopt the EV charging ordinance and to help increase EV use and access in our community. As you know, the city is working towards climate actions to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and increasing the infrastructure need to support vehicle electrification has been one of those main strategies that's included in two of the city's plans, the Sustainable Building Action Strategy and the recently adopted Mobility Master Plan. In addition, it was requested by members of our community at the community convening on climate last year, as well as by council members. We're also currently developing a climate action plan this year and plan to reconvene that group to get their input on specific strategies and actions moving forward. So adopting this ordinance will demonstrate the city's commitment to action and will be something to celebrate at that meeting. This slide shows an overview of the percentages of EV infrastructure that are included in the proposal. We've heard from our boards and commissions, these percentages are about right at this time. There is some discussion that they should be revisited in the future as electrification increases, but that these are a good starting point. EVSE stands for Electric Vehicle Supply Equipment, which is the charging equipment itself, and EV Ready means it's wired for a charging station to be added at a later date. So here's a summary of the updates and recommendations made to the ordinance since the last study session. The first change is the removal of the $350 Single Family and Town Home Incentive Program that was originally proposed. Second, no changes have been made for TODs, so the EV requirements will continue to apply to them. Third, due to equity concerns that we heard from the community, the administration removed the waiver for affordable housing units. And instead, the ordinance now includes provisions for affordable housing that more accurately reflect the services and needs of residents. Last, there is no change to the Single Family requirements, so Single Family continues to be exempt from the ordinance. The first item I want to discuss is affordable housing.
Excuse me, Megan, if I may just check in for a second. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to ask your question as we're going through, or do you want to wait for the end of the presentation?
I think I'd like to ask this question now, if you don't mind.
And do we need to be on a different slide?
Yes. Back to the chart, Megan, that you had. So this is the proposed ordinance. It's my understanding that we already have an EV charging code, so to speak, and that we have the International Building Code, right?
Correct.
So can you, just because we're discussing this and we haven't discussed that, I don't think that's been in our materials since either January, early, maybe January, maybe it was early February, just briefly describe what the, the code, the IBC, already requires, and that that is the code that is, it's not like we don't have any EV charging requirements. We have a code, that we have a code now. It's IBC. And so if you could just clarify the difference between that and this proposal, that would be great.
Sure. So with the state building code, they do updates to their, to the building code every, or to the energy code every three years, and as part of the 2018 updates that became effective on, I believe, February 1st of this year, that we adopted along with other jurisdictions in Washington, there is an EV charging component to that. So that requires all multifamily and commercial buildings to do some EV infrastructure. The way that is defined is a little bit different than what we have in our ordinance. So to fulfill those requirements, projects have an option of either installing electric vehicle chargers for 5% of their parking spaces, or to have 5% of their parking spaces be EV capable. So that does not include the, the wiring that is required. So projects have an option of choosing between those two pieces.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question, and I think when we get further, it would probably be, I asked some questions, and I don't know that all of them went out. They probably did, but the public didn't get to see those responses. One of them is the exemption for projects, I'll just say projects, where there's certain exemption, exemption for smaller projects, and also not everything in the IBC is included. So, for example, it doesn't include retail. So ours is a much broader ordinance. So maybe if you get to places during your presentation where, where it's an opportunity for you to explain some of the differences, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Megan, that's a good suggestion, but maybe at the end, you could go through the questions and answers so that the members of the public who may not have seen them hear what answers the council got this week. I think that'd be good.
Sure.
Keep going.
All right. Okay, so going into affordable housing. So as I mentioned on the previous slide, the administration has removed the waiver for affordable housing units. So at the study session, we heard a few different ideas for requirements for affordable housing. Overall, we heard that the council wants to ensure access to reflect the services and needs of these residents, but perhaps in a more flexible manner. So we're now proposing that affordable housing units meet EV infrastructure requirements, but allow the builders to take some cost-reduction measures, like reducing parking spots and structured parking to meet those requirements. Then, if these are not feasible, there are allowances for reducing parking lot landscaping or providing a portion of the stalls EV capable. So this option is the administration's recommendation, as currently included in the proposal. The other options that were discussed with council and at the board and commission meetings are listed here, and a mix, include a mix of full requirements for affordable housing or variations of reduced requirements. And city staff has reached out to several affordable housing groups to ask for their perspective on these options. Both Imagine Housing and a Regional Coalition for Housing were supportive of the administration's recommendation to remove, to reduce costs. However, King County Housing Authority and a developer working on a TOD project were concerned that the EV charging spaces wouldn't be utilized in affordable housing units due to a lack of EV ownership.
So Megan, before we move on, it looks like we have a couple of questions. Council President Hunt, I just want to check in. Is the question related to the slide, and would you like to ask it now?
Yes.
Okay. And then I think Councilmember Martz also has a question. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. My question is on the EV capable, and you had earlier given the definitions of EVSE and EV Ready, and so I wonder if you could give the definition of EV capable, because that is one of the, that is part of the recommendation, and then also, what would it mean to have to, what would it mean for somebody to actually be able to charge their car if it started out as, as only an EV capable spot?
Sure. Thank you. This is Megan. EV capable means that there is, there's conduit, but there's no wiring there. So there would be space to put in the wiring at a future date. So if you were going to take an EV capable spot and want to, someone to actually be able to, to plug into a charger there, you would first need to run the wiring, which we've been calling EV Ready, and then install the EV charger itself, EVSE. Was there a second part?
Council President Hunt, second part to the question, or?
I think that answers it. Just to clarify, that, that the person who has the car to charge wouldn't be able to do the wiring step themselves, right? That would be the, the owner of the building, or the person responsible for the building. Thank you.
And Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. You know, in prepping for the meeting tonight, I was reading the materials, and I'm still not sure I know exactly what number one means. Meet the EV infrastructure requirements through a cross-neutral approach. Can you give me an example of how that would, how that might work involving changing structured parking requirements and what the, I don't really understand what that means. Thanks.
Yes, this is Megan. So we were trying to find ways that we could reduce the overall cost for adding this EV infrastructure, hearing both that cost is a, an added concern for, especially for affordable housing, but also wanted to make sure it was there. So we are thinking about projects and ways that we could reduce that projects, or reduce that cost. So projects by code are required to have a certain number of parking spots, and depending on where they are, structured parking. So those were thought as ways to be able to reduce those costs. We had heard that parking is a major cost in all projects, but especially affordable housing, kind of as a percentage of the overall project. I don't have the figures in front of me, but I think for each spot, it could range from 30,000 to 60,000, kind of depending on structured level, underground, all of those factors. So we thought that that would be a good way to be able to offset some of those costs. So still require the project to install the, you know, the full EV infrastructure requirements for multifamily buildings, but that they might be able to reduce a parking spot or do maybe less structured parking, and they would need to do a proposal to demonstrate those costs and how those would be cost-neutral.
Okay. I understand it now. Thank you. I appreciate that explanation.
Councilmember Martz, this is the mayor. I just wanted to add one other point to that, too. It's a nuance that's maybe not apparent in the material. The needs of those in affordable housing units may be different, and so it may be possible to actually result in more EV charging stations than what we have in the code. And I think what we want to do is give them that flexibility. If they can show that there's a lesser stall demand, we may be able to then have our affordable housing code saved, then make them all electric vehicle charging capable. So the hope is that it's a win-win and an improvement. So, thank you, Megan. You want to continue on with your?
Sure. Thank you. So the next topic of discussion is around the Single Family requirements. So in the original proposal, Single Family is exempt from the EV ordinance. The city administration recommends that they continue to be exempt, per the advice of the city attorney, is the city attorney that was detailed in the memo at the last study session. So the other option discussed was to require EV Ready infrastructure in Single Family and Town Homes. The Environmental Board had a meeting to discuss the proposal on March 10th. Overall, they recommended that the council move forward with the ordinance, but with a couple of amendments. The first was to require EV Ready requirements for Single Family if possible now, but if not, to include them in the future. The second recommendation was about the new proposal on affordable housing. They wanted to specify that substituting EV Ready or EVSE infrastructure with EV capable should only be done as a last resort. They also provided a few other pieces of feedback, including one to revisit the proposal, encouraging pathways for Single Family requirements, and considering subsidies for affordable housing within the larger Title 18 update process. And one update that I wanted to include here is that we recently learned that the Regional Code Collaboration will be submitting an amendment to the State Building Code Council to allow jurisdictions to require Single Family charging. So they'll be submitting this on behalf of King County, and if passed, it would become an option in the next energy code update. On March 11th, the PPC held a public hearing on the proposal and also recommended the council move forward with the ordinance with a few changes. They recommended removing the affordable housing section in the ordinance and instead require affordable housing to meet 100% of the, of the requirements, with none of the other stipulations are currently in the proposal. They also specified that if the council wants to include the affordable housing approach proposed by the administration, then can, then to consider switching EVSE spaces to EV Ready spaces as a cost-reduction method, rather than the other options included in the proposal. proposed by the administration, then to consider switching EVSE spaces to EV-ready spaces as a cost-reduction method rather than the other options included in the proposal. So one reason for PPC's recommendation is that the commissioners review land use codes, and they had specifically recommended items like landscape requirements for their environmental The options before the council this evening are to adopt the ordinance as proposed or to make modifications to the proposal. The administration recommends the council adopt the ordinance as proposed, which would include having the provisions of EV infrastructure and affordable housing with that flexibility that the mayor was referring to, but not the requirements for single-family. So this council meeting comes after two previous touches with the city council, the environmental board and PPC. So if passed tonight, the projects would be required to comply with the ordinance on April 13 unless their permits are vested by that date. And I wanted to make one clarification from the memo, which incorrectly stated that the projects going through land use permits would not need to comply. Under Washington State vested rights doctrine, vesting is only with a building permit, preliminary plat or development agreement. So thus, projects going through land use will need to comply unless vested. So once again, here's the administration's recommendation. So thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Megan. There was a reference earlier to some questions and answers that were distributed this week but may not have been available to the public. I wonder if you could cover some of that. And then under the questions, it looks like Councilmember Goodman has also lined up for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. I was just going to ask Megan to go over that, what she said about single-family and the recommendation and possibly change during the next cycle. And I think you said energy code every three years, so I was just wanting you to repeat that because I wasn't quite sure if I heard it all correctly. Thank you.
Sure. This was just something that I learned today talking with representatives from the regional code collaboration, that they are also wanting to include single-family requirements. And King County is looking at a similar proposal right now and has the same desire. So they are going to be approaching the state building code council so that they can propose an amendment that would allow the single-family to be included by jurisdictions if they choose to. It would still have to be something that is adopted by jurisdictions. And what I mentioned about the updates is that that would be an optional amendment to the next energy code cycle from the way I understand it now. So they would be able to...as I mentioned, we just had the state electric vehicle requirements just became effective on February 1. That was actually part of the 2018 energy code process. So this would be an amendment for the 2021 energy code, so three-year cycle, that would then be an option a couple of years after that to be adopted by jurisdictions.
And you're saying energy code, but it would be potentially a change to the building code?
Yes, yes, that's part of the building code.
It'd be a 2021 amendment that...okay, thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anything else that you need to recap on Q and A or are we pretty much caught up?
I am going to just look at that. We had a few questions by council members that came in. And I will try to summarize those briefly. I will try to summarize those briefly. So we had a couple of questions about how the townhome incentive program that's currently included in the ordinance, previously in code, since we did not have any specific requirements for electric vehicle infrastructure, the city used to have or currently has an incentive program on the books that allows projects to reduce their parking. So there was just a question about that. So that is one of the pieces in the code that we are changing. So since we are now with this ordinance, if passed, we'd be requiring EV infrastructure, it was recommended that that incentive program reflect that, so we're not reflecting things that are already required. We also had some clarification questions on the cost-neutral approach, which I think we were talking about a little bit to Councilmember Martz's questions. And we had some kind of clarification questions around some of the recommendations from the environmental board and the PPC, which we talked about some in the presentation. Let me just scan through. And then we also had the question from Councilmember Goodman about the current state code, which we talked about a little bit in this presentation. And then also looking at the number of projects that we might be seeing in the next two years. So although we're not able to project exactly the projects that are going to be coming down the road, we had some numbers about projects from recent years. And then we also talked about a couple of the projects that are currently in the pipeline and how many units might be there. And I think that mostly summarizes it, but I'm happy to address any further questions from the council about those items.
Thank you, Megan. We'll move into Q and A now, and it looks like Council President Hunt has a question.
Thank you. Yes. So I had a question. It was in the email, but I think there was some more information there. So the question is around what is...what kind of homes are currently covered in the ordinance? So are townhomes covered, duplex, triplex, fourplex, or any of those covered by the ordinance currently?
This is Megan. I might let the city attorney, James Haney, elaborate a little bit more on what was covered in the ordinance there. Sorry, I can start off and give you a minute. So overall, we do have the multifamily and commercial requirements. And then we did not include single-family homes, but there was a little bit of discussion around townhomes in there that I can let the city attorney talk about.
Well, we discussed townhomes, and it comes down to whether or not the state...the state building code states that cities cannot impose additional regulations on single-family residential and on multifamily residential buildings without the approval of the state building code council. The building code, the state building code, however, defines multifamily buildings in a way which is a little bit different from what we would ordinarily think of as multifamily. And in fact, it provides specifically that multifamily buildings are...include buildings which are four or fewer units, which contain 5,000 or fewer square feet, which are less than...or which are two or, excuse me, less than three stories high, and that have a certain one-hour fire-resistant construction between the common walls of the units. So that does make it so that you can have certain townhomes, certain common wall construction covered by your ordinance and other construction you can't. So things that meet the definition of multifamily residential building in the state building code, which again is different from what we would normally think of as the commonly-accepted definition of multifamily, those things cannot be covered, just like single-family cannot be covered. But things which don't meet that definition can in fact be covered by the ordinance if you wish to make them covered. As I read the ordinance currently, under multifamily, just R1, which are hotel occupancies, R2 occupancies, and I2 occupancies are covered. So I don't think that townhomes that you are talking about would be covered under the current ordinance, but they could be.
Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I do have one quick follow-up, if I may. And I think this is for Megan. So in the regional code collaboration code that we're basing this ordinance on originally, could you remind us what the townhome requirement is for EV charging?
Yes, this is Megan. In the original regional code collaboration proposal, they had split out single-family and townhomes separately and were requiring one EV-ready spot. And then they had multifamily and commercial separately from that. And they are looking at those items still as well.
Megan, can you elaborate on what it means that they're looking at those items? What does that mean?
They have those recommended in the current proposal, and then King County is currently looking to adopt that as well, and they're discussing that single-family element right now, whether or not they wanted to include the single-family element or not.
So is it settled ordinance or is it in progress?
The King County one is in progress.
Okay. Looks like City Administrator Bob Quitz has turned his camera on, and then after, we have a question from Councilmember Goodman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on your question back to Megan regarding what is the status of other King County cities that the collaborative is, the King County as well as other jurisdictions. I know, Megan, that other jurisdictions are...there have been one or two over a period of years who have adopted something similar, but many jurisdictions, quite frankly, are watching Issaquah to see what makes sense. And certainly, the legal issues that Mr. Haney has been looking at as far as the state code goes has been something that the collaborative really hadn't delved into prior to the Issaquah discussion. Is that correct?
I think they've delved into it, but not as deep as we have in Issaquah.
And there are the cities in King County that have already adopted something similar? What are they?
They were adopted prior to the state building code having EV infrastructure requirements, and that was Seattle, Edmonds, and Montlake Terrace.
And so we would be the first community to...that is considering this with those...after those changes were made in the state code, correct?
Correct. Us and King County is also doing it at the same time.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, City Administrator. Councilmember Goodman, you have a question?
Thank you. I had asked a couple of other questions, and so I just wanted to make sure that those get out to council members and to the public. I had asked Megan for the split between EV ownership. So what do we know, the split between owners in single-family homes and owners in not single-family homes? And Megan provided information that 72% of electric vehicles are owned by people who are in single-family homes. Also, we had answered an email from the public, and I know the council saw it, but the rest of the public did not, that we're expecting a 9% increase in electric vehicle ownership by 2025. So I wanted those stats out there. And then the other question that I had asked Megan and I actually had talked to Department of Ecology, the ordinance talks about Senate Bill 5811, and it talks about, as Megan mentioned, that it authorizes the Department of Ecology to require automakers to sell a certain percentage of zero-emission vehicles each year. But, sorry, it authorizes DOE to make the rules for that. So DOE is going to start that rulemaking pretty soon, and they expect that rulemaking to be done by early next year. However, I further asked when that is going to be effective, and the federal law...and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, the federal law says that it can't be effective any sooner than...it's two years. It has to do with the year of the car. And I don't...so in this case, I don't think the rule could be in effect until 2024 model cars. So Megan, correct me if I'm wrong.
This is Megan. I don't have further details on that.
Okay, let's see. So from DOE, it says the requirements will begin two-vehicle model years after adoption due to federal law. So DOE says it gets confusing since automakers introduce the next model year far ahead of the calendar date. Likely, it will mean Washington's requirements will begin...sorry, I was wrong, with the 2025 model year. So I'm guessing that means 2025 model cars don't go on sale usually until the fall of the year before, so that would be fall of 2024. So my question is whether Megan has any corrections to that. It sounds like she doesn't. Anyway, I just wanted those clarified or out in the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Megan, do you have any additional information on that?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I am...we are still in the question and answer portion, and I'm looking at the chat. I am not seeing that there are any additional questions right now, and if somebody would care to make a motion, we could entertain a motion, and council could continue to ask questions and also deliberate. Council President Hunt?
Clerk Eggers, could I get the main motion in the chat, please? Thank you. I moved to adopt ordinance number 2941, amending sections of...amending sections 18.02.070 and 18.09.140 of the Issaquah Municipal Code related to electric vehicle charging and amending Chapter 8.12 and 8.13 of the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards to Add Electric Vehicle Charging.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will go back to Council President Hunt for comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I am very excited to be talking about this. I think that it's an important step towards future-proofing our development. I think we will be experiencing a big shift in people becoming...wanting to, for example, use a electric car and transition to an electric car well within the lifetime of these new developments and new buildings. And so I think it may feel like we're a little bit ahead of the curve on this one, but for the most part, I think that infrastructure, the infrastructure being there is super-important because these buildings that they're associated with will be there for 50-plus years, and having the infrastructure in place is a positive, forward-looking way we can future-proof. And I do, however, have a few concerns that I would like to talk through with council. And one of them is around the EV capable, the ability to switch from EV-ready to EV-capable for affordable housing. And my concern on that particular aspect is that, as was discussed at great length by our commissions, including the Planning Policy Commission, it's an equity issue if there isn't that infrastructure in place specifically only for affordable housing. And if we allow, in that cost-neutral approach, allow developers to switch to EV-capable, then that does not...that means that the infrastructure isn't actually available for a person that is living in that affordable housing to charge. They would need the person in charge of the building to make a change, to actually wire the conduit. And so I think that that is problematic, and it seems from my understanding of the commission's discussions, they also, both Planning Policy thought that you should allow the switch from EVSE, which means all the equipment is there, to EV-ready, which means just the outlet is there. And then also, in some of the comments from Environmental Board, also concerned about this capable, EV-capable switch, because again, it doesn't actually... Because again, it doesn't actually allow people to charge without a change being made to the building. Then the bigger and more complicated concern, but one that I think we are on our way to addressing, is that I think we can, while still taking into account the city attorney's recommendations to not require this for single-family homes, I think we can still be more expansive in the kinds of homes that we do cover with this ordinance if we cover everything except for that, which is specifically in the definition in the state code for multifamily, which is three stories for, less than four, four or less units, and the other things that City Attorney Haney read off earlier. So that definition is more restrictive than what we are currently excluding from our ordinance. And I would like to discuss that with council. But my strong feeling is we should cover as much as, as much building types as possible with this ordinance and to make it as applicable broadly as possible across the building types. And I do, from my understanding, think that most town homes would be able to be included in the ordinance. And also not, while also taking into account and following the recommendation of our city attorney. But that would take a amendment. And also wanted to comment that it seems, many people in the community that commented over the many meetings that we, multiple meetings that we had on this, did think that single-family should be there, so I'm, should be included. So I'm grateful to hear that that is being brought up by the regional code collaboration, that there's efforts to look into that further. But I think for tonight, we can also do, I think we could also expand and cover more grounds. And then very last thing I wanted to say on this is, we will need to do a lot of things at all levels, the city level, state level, multiple levels of government, to do the best we can to avoid the worst possible effects of climate change. So this is not the only, it's not the only thing that we'll need to do. This is one action of many, many actions, but it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Before I go to Deputy Council President Ray, I wonder, Mr. Haney, you had mentioned before in a previous meeting that if the council were to propose changes, there's possibility it would have to go back to planning policy. But this doesn't sound like a substantive change. Is that correct? Ha ha, you're muted.
I knew I was going to do that at some point. Yeah, my understanding is that the council's intent was to have this cover everything. It was within the scope of the alternatives that were discussed. So you'd be able to make that change if you wanted to make it.
Thank you for that clarification. Deputy Council President Ray, did you want to make comments before I move to others?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I just want to be very brief. I have a couple of thoughts about this ordinance. One is, I think this, not only is it make good policy decision, but I think this is also just a good business decision. It seems very clear to me that electronic, our electric vehicles are on the horizon. And it may not be until 2025 or 2026, but they definitely are on the horizon. So I think this is, this is about getting ahead of the demand. The, and also, the life expectancy of the buildings that would be being built now would be far, far into a period where electric charging will be required. And the cost of retrofitting is so much higher than the cost of the initial installation. Again, I just think it makes, it makes good business, good economic sense, as well as making good policy and environmental sense. So I think this is the right thing for us to do. And I think it's good for us to be out in front of this, leading the way.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So I took the liberty of looking at this ordinance. I spent a lot of time on it, and I took the liberty of looking at it through the criteria that we adopted at our, I think it was our last meeting, time flies, about whether we should consider things outside of Title 18 holistically. And so I'm going to run through those. The first one was whether there's an urgency or time sensitivity. So I had talked about the Senate bill already. That doesn't, although it's suggested in the ordinance, that's at some sort of a time sensitivity. And the commissions have been told that there's a quote "flood" unquote of EVs coming soon. What you can see in that Senate bill and the actual reality is that that's not going to take effect until at least Model 2025 are here. And also, as we heard tonight, that GM isn't going to start exclusively having EVs until 2035. There's also some other interesting statistics regarding the time sensitivity. So I got some statistics from a website provided by DOE. In the 98027 and 98029 ZIP codes, which encompass Issaquah, which are broader than Issaquah, we have a total of 1,352 EVs that are registered in those two ZIP codes right now. By 2025, we're expected to have a 9% increase. That 9% increase in those two ZIP codes, which again is broader than Issaquah, is 122 EVs by 2025. 72%, which I mentioned earlier, 72% of that number is single-family homeowners. That represents 89 of those EVs. And 33 of those EVs would be owned by people who don't live in single-family. Yet, the ordinance doesn't address single-family, which we heard. I'm glad, too, that we're hearing that single-family would get addressed. But it's not addressed in this ordinance. I also don't think that it covers the TOD project because that would be a development agreement. So one of the next things we were promised ourselves that we would consider, trade-offs or potential conflicts with other parts of Title 18. So one of the things I like to do with code is to run through a practice project. And the practice project that I could think of was my own real project, which was the remodel of our law office at Six and Sunset that we did a couple of years ago. So per our own city parking code, for our 3,000-square-foot building, we were required to have 10 spaces. The International Building Code would exempt us from having to provide EV charging infrastructure because we don't have to provide, we would have to provide less than 20 onsite parking spaces. But this proposed code would require us to provide 40%, dedicate 40% of our parking spaces to EV infrastructure. So, okay, that doesn't sound like a big deal. The problem is, we only have two or three spaces. We're in an old house. We have a driveway. So we have two, three spaces max. The way we get around the 10 spaces is because prior to current building ownership, there were some things worked out with the city where the business could park tandem in front and use the easement on the side of the building. And then during this remodel two years ago, the city required us to have an agreement with somebody, another business down the street, that we could use their parking lot if we needed parking. And that business is Flintoff's funeral home. So if this, if we were to do our remodel after, if this code were adopted, we would not be able to comply. I don't know where a business like us is supposed to put EV charging infrastructure if we only have three spaces, we're required to utilize four, and you're not going to be able to put EV charging infrastructure in an easement or in somebody else's parking lot. So that doesn't, okay, you're thinking that's a law office. But this could happen, we have a parking issue with lots of buildings, lots of businesses around town. Think of all the businesses along Front Street who don't have any parking spaces, who don't have any dedicated parking spaces. That could create a real problem. And I think it will create a real problem. It's, you know, like a florist shop, or even Flintoffs, or a daycare. You know, a daycare, this code, although the International Building Code exempts small businesses, this code encompasses everybody, all retails, all retail, every non-residential business it encompasses would require to comply. That is a big problem. The next one is what benefit, public or otherwise, would be gained or what is lost if we don't do this now? Again, as noted, the statistics say that we will gain 33 EVs by 2025. They're not owned by single-family homeowners. And I think that that number is statistically immaterial for determining whether there is a gain or a loss here. Budgetary and/or resource staff impact, what impacts would this have? I think that this code creates another implementation headache for staff, just as I was talking about. You're going to have applicants applying for waivers and adjustment of standards because they're simply not going to be able to comply with it. That's the reality. We are not unusual. We are a typical business in the older part of downtown that is not going to be able to comply with the parking code and provide, you know, 30 or 40% of parking spaces when they don't even have those for EVs. Other considerations, as I've mentioned before, we already have a code. It's IBC Section 429. It already requires some type of EV infrastructure. I think that this proposed code is a unicorn, and it goes way beyond the IBC. And our code, our Title 18 already is a unicorn. It, to say it nicely, does not have a very good reputation. It is extraordinarily difficult to maneuver through. I've lived it. We've had several attorneys trying to work through the code already in a very minor remodel, and it was a nightmare. I think this is, I think that is the wrong time to be piling on something that's this complicated when we already have a state code and we're in the middle of Title 18. You know, I don't think we need another unicorn in our code. Title 18 has a ton of unicorns. And although I love unicorns, I don't think that the city should be a unicorn with even a longer horn on it. I mean, we already have a bad reputation. And lastly, for the other considerations, the proposed code goes in the opposite direction of what we're trying to achieve for Title 18. And two of the, the two of the stated goals that are applicable here for Title 18 overhaul are, we want it to be effective, equitable, and have predictable results. We want it to be easier to understand and better organized for use by the public, by property owners, and by staff. And it's not. I think that we should hold off and consider this holistically as part of Title 18. It sounds like by then, we will have the single-family issue addressed, which I think would be fantastic. It's just another layer of complexity here that, based on the numbers that I've read off, does not meaningful, meaningfully address climate change issues. I know it sounds like perhaps I'm not for addressing climate change. That couldn't be farther from the truth. We just need meaning, we need things that are meaningful. I don't think that this is meaningful. You're talking about 9% of an increase. I read off the numbers. Businesses are not, many businesses are not going to be able to comply with this. I think it's unnecessarily complicated. It's not as meaningful as we want it. And we are, have, we'll have a Title 18 code done in 18 months at the most. Anyway, I'm going to have a very difficult time supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. We have a few other council members wanting to weigh in. It sounds like Councilmember Walsh with a comment and a question, followed by Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. As far as comment, I just wanted to thank PPC and the Environmental Board and staff on all of the work on this. This is not easy, being the first city to go through something like this. And so I appreciate the thoughtfulness for which we have done that. I guess I want to ask a question following up on some of the things that Councilmember Goodman has asked because I had really focused very much on the residential portion of things. And thinking through the non-residential portion, you know, I think you think, oh, big box store or large office building that has all of this large parking infrastructure. And while that's an entirely different story and something that I'd love to address later, what about these situations where we've got, you know, smaller businesses that may have shared parking, such as in our downtown, that may have only street parking? How do businesses like that handle this type of code? Particularly shared parking, street parking, or very little parking for a small business? Is there any information on that?
I believe that's a question from Megan, and Megan may be able to answer that tonight, but she's not deeply involved with land use code and much other things. So I may see if City Administrator Bobquitz has an answer. I'm on the spot.
Megan, why don't you try, and I'll follow up as I can?
Sure, happy to. This is Megan. I think overall, when projects are being built or going through the substantial remodel, which is the 50% value that would trigger this, they would be assigned a certain number of parking spots that they need to accommodate. So this is taking into consideration, this would be doing a percent of those parking spaces. You are correct, I don't have the exact details on if some of those parking spaces are street parking versus some are being built parking. I don't quite have the answer on that, but it's taking an overall percentage and requiring the infrastructure on parking spots that are required to be built, associated with the project.
Megan, let me throw an example on the table. We know that Big Picture is coming to Old Town and doesn't have any parking. So how would it apply to them? They don't have any dedicated parking.
Then they would not need to comply. They would not need to go and put in EV chargers in spots.
They wouldn't, okay. City Administrator Bobquitz, did you have anything to add?
Pointing that I see that our new Community Planning and Development Director, Minnie Dallowal, is here in the green room. I've asked the clerk to let her in to the council, the virtual council chambers. It'd be nice to introduce her and see if she has any thoughts or comments on this. While she's coming on, Megan, I guess I would also go back to Councilmember Goodman's question with her commercial business, which has a limited amount of parking. Would they have to put that EV charging in if they were to do a substantial improvement in the future, or had the code been in place?
I believe they would with the special cases about the, some parking being down the street and some parking spaces being tandem. I don't think that if there's 10 parking spaces required, that then they would have to go and put EV infrastructure on parking spaces down the street. But I don't have the best answer on how exactly that would be implemented for that project.
And so, Madam Mayor, let me take this opportunity to formally introduce Minnie Dallowal, the, our new Community Planning and Development Director. I'm sure she didn't come to the meeting tonight prepared to speak to any of us. But since she's on the line, Minnie, I don't know if you want to make any, any comments about what we've been discussing.
Sure. Good evening, councilmembers. Glad to be here. On the topic that you're discussing tonight, you know, if it is a concern to tie the requirement to something different than 50% substantial value improvement, we can look at maybe perhaps tying it to if you're increasing the number of parking spaces. So if you're expanding and you have 10 parking spaces, but now the code requires you to add about 20 more or something, you know, there could be a threshold tied to increase in parking supply. That's one threshold. If it is generally a concern for trying to work with the existing businesses that don't have that much parking. So right now, the code, the way I understand it is written, it's tied to a dollar value. So if your building is valued at $100,000 and you're making it more than 50% of that So if your building is valued at $100,000 and you're making it more than 50% of that $150,000 value, then this requirement would be triggered. So we can look at different triggers if that is a concern. And then I think the other, or if you want to not deal with the existing businesses now and just make it applicable to new development that's going to go in, that may be another option for council to consider.
Minnie, could you expand on that a little bit? This is the mayor. We do have a couple places in town where existing landowners have more parking than required in the code. Would they be required under this new ordinance to do 40% of all of the parking they have or 40% of the parking they're required under the code? If they were to do a major renovation?
The way that the ordinance is written right now, it's my understanding, it's 40% of your entire, the supply that you have on the ground, not what the code requires.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to take a second here and check in, if it's okay with Councilmember Mertz, with Councilmember De Michelle, who doesn't have a subject question but a process question. So I'm wondering if we can just hear what that is.
Yeah, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. Earlier today, the council was sent a copy of some possible amendments to the motion. And it sounds like we're kind of straying from questions into deliberations on the central motion. So I just wanted to check, you know, maybe, maybe nobody wants to make those amendment motions, but I just wanted to check and make sure that we, if we are going to take up amendments, we, I believe we need to do those before we can get to the main motion. So that's just my question.
Thank you for that. Yes, we will stick to questions versus comments, questions on the main motion. So I want to go back to Councilmember Walsh first. Did you get the answer you were looking for before I move to Councilmember Mertz?
Yes, I think I did. It gives me a lot to think about. I'll, I'll be very Councilmember Hall-like. But yeah, thank you.
And Councilmember Mertz, you had indicated a comment. Is it a comment or a question at this point?
I actually do have a question. So in Councilmember Goodman's example of a commercial application, the bill says that parking associated with non-residential uses shall meet the requirements of Table 8.2. It's a total of 15%, not 40%, and it's rounding down when you're at a fraction below 0.5. So if you have 10 parking stalls, you have to have maybe one EV-ready parking space and maybe one EVSE. So I just want to get clarity, because the example that was used, it sounded like it was a lot, but for a commercial application, I don't think that's what the ordinance says. So can I get clarity on that, please?
No, I think, I think you're, I think you're correct.
That's Councilmember Goodman speaking.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Goodman speaking. You're right. I'm sorry, you're right. I think my point was that we have a, like, there are difficult, very difficult situations in the city, and we're going to find many applications out of this or that are going to be, have to comply and are going to be very difficult. Thank you for correcting that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. I'm looking for, awesome. I'm looking for any additional questions, and I believe we have heard from most of our councilmembers. And if there are no more, I'm going to go for a second round of questions and go back to Council President Hunt.
Thank you. Well, firstly, I think there is a main, there is a motion on the floor, and so my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of the procedure here would be that we can discuss that main motion, and then if there is an interest in making those amendment motions, then we can make those and then discuss those. But I, I think that it would be appropriate. So I just wanted to mention that I had earlier made the main motion. There is a motion on the floor to be deliberated right now.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And then I had one comment on that. So on the main motion, it was mentioned that something like 70 something percent of the electric vehicles are in single-family, are in homes that are single-family. And I think one of the main reasons that that is the case is that a lot of people that might choose to have an electric vehicle or might want to have an electric vehicle are in situations where they don't have access to charging. And that's been found to be one of the main barriers, in fact, to owning an electric vehicle or to using an electric vehicle. So I just wanted to point that out, is that it's not, not indicative, I think, that people in other forms of housing wouldn't want to also have those, but rather that there is a barrier that we're trying to address with this bill.
Thank you. Any, so let's just move into comments then before we call for a vote. Is there any other councilmember who would like to make a comment? And please add your name in the chat, and I'll start with Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I support this measure tonight. I think that it's true that, you have to be careful when looking at estimates, right? Because you have to be careful at what's the cause and what's, what's correlation and what's causality, right? If you have a 9% predicted growth rate, that's with certain assumptions, right? If you're a town that has more charging capability, you may be getting more growth. We don't know, but we do know that electric vehicle growth is increasing. And as the council president has pointed out, access to charging is an important aspect of people's decisions to buy electric vehicles. I think, you know, looking at these numbers, I think this is a careful and prudent way to continue our environmental leadership in King County. So I'll be proud to support this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I too will be supporting the motion. And I did also, I wanted to comment on the Policy Planning Commission and the Environmental Board work. I listened in on the Policy Planning Commission and their discussion, and it certainly swayed my opinion on requiring charging stations for affordable housing. I wasn't able to sit in on the Environmental Board, but I read their recommendation thoroughly. And I agree with the points that they made, especially about that electric vehicle charging is a rapidly developing industry, and that the council should revisit the impacts of this ordinance within the next year or the next couple of years, whatever we think is a, is a good cycle. But it is rapidly developing and changing, and we should be monitoring the impacts of this ordinance. And I just want to point out, because the comments were made, that, that the council doesn't listen to the Planning Policy Commission and the Environmental Board, and I think that's very wrong. And I really learned a lot from listening in and from reading the recommendations, and I really commend both of them for the thoughtful input that they provided to us. My last comment is, as a person who lives in a multifamily condo, I'd love to have an electric vehicle. I don't have an electric vehicle charging station, and I do think it's the major barrier. So if we're looking at the potential of only 33 multifamily housing coming in in the next few years, I would say it's because there's no place to charge your electric vehicle. And so I think we need to start changing it. Working with young people, I hear all the time, why aren't you moving now? Now? If we wait three years to do this, that's three years of construction that we've missed. So I will be supporting this tonight. I will be voting for it. And I thank the council for its deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Any other comments? Before I come back to you, Council President Hunt, I'm going to see if there are any that have not commented yet. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Hall. I actually just have a quick clarifying question. The scope of the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee, are they charged with, and I'm not sure who this is particularly for a member, an ad hoc committee member or for a city administrator, but is that ad hoc committee charged with considering policy changes or cleaning up the code so it's more friendly for customers and for city staff? Could someone just quickly go over the charge of the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee again?
Sure, it looks like City Administrator Bobquist is coming on.
Councilmember Hall, members of the council, I, I think it really is both. I think that certainly the cleanup, streamlining is important, but I think that the policy questions are also a part of that. And so I think part of the reason that the process is a, a complicated one is to make there be an overall better code that serves the needs of our community, and that's just a pretty tall order. So members of the ad hoc can chime in, but I, I hope I've answered that correctly.
Councilmember Hall, did that answer your question?
It sure does. Thanks, Mayor Pauli.
Okay, great. Any other comments? And if not, I'm going to go back to Council President Hunt. Council President Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to make an amendment. And this is the amendment that was emailed out. It is rather long, but I will read it, and it is in our, it is in our email. Oh, okay. And city clerk, before I start this, I do need to read the entire amendment. Is that correct?
Hi, thank you. Yes, you would need to, to read it in its entirety. If you'd like me to pull it up on the screen, I'm happy to do that, so it can be shared with all.
I think, yes, thank you. I think that would be good, because it is rather long. I amend Section 2 of Ordinance Number 2941, adding the following language within Table A1 as follows: New multifamily (R1, R2, and I2) occupancies in any other multi-unit residential building not meeting the definition of, quote, "multifamily residential building" under the State Building Code RCW 19.27.015 (for) existing multifamily buildings undergoing substantial improvements (R1, R2, and I2) occupancies in any other multi-unit residential building not meeting the definition of multifamily residential building under the State Building Code RCW 19.27.015 (for). And amend Section 3 of Ordinance Number 2941, striking IMC 18.09.140B. And further amend Section 4 of Ordinance Number 2941, amending Central ISCA Development and Design Standards, striking Paragraph 8.13 (B), (11) electric vehicle charging, electric vehicle charging parking provisions of the Central ISCA Development and Design Standards.
Is there a second? Councilmember De Michelle?
Oh, I'll second that motion, sorry.
Thanks. And Council President Hunt, do you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. Most charging does occur at home, and the intent of this ordinance is to expand our ability to have the ordinance cover more residential home types of buildings. And it's not clear, really, from the amendment itself, but as, as our city attorney, Haney, spoke to earlier, the state Building Code Council has a much more narrow definition of what the purview is. It's single-family, and then also a very, a very narrow definition, in my opinion, of multifamily. And so townhomes, if we make this change, the big takeaway is that if we make this change, most townhomes, townhomes with more than four units, for example, would be, would be covered by the ordinance, and they would not, they are not currently there. So this, I'm making this motion to cover more residential building types, recognizing that charging at home is where most people do choose to charge, and charging is a barrier for people to own EVs, and also to take into account a lot of the public comment that we received and the comments that we received from our commissions, really advising that we should have single-family in there, so this gets a little closer to covering more housing types while still not, while still taking into account our city attorney's legal
Thank you. And Councilmember De Michelle, did you want to make comments before we go to other councilmembers?
I'll just be very brief. Council President Hunt covered it very, very well. I think this amendment helps us to stretch this ordinance to cover more. And I, you know, our, our original goal was to cover everyone, so we're getting closer there legally, and so I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other comments, but I'll give it a second. If there's any other comments from councilmembers, please add your name in the chat. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So I have the precise answer to Councilmember Hall's question about the ad hoc committee. You want me to wait or read it now?
I think that's okay to read it now.
All right. So March of last year, we had an agenda bill, and the motion was made and approved, and it said, "Direct the Land Use Code Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee to continue meeting on the planning phase of the project and expand its scope to include making recommendations on the policy decisions within the Land Use Code Title 18 update through project completion." Dot, dot, dot. So that was the answer to your question.
Thank you. Do any other councilmembers want to make a comment or have a question before we go to the vote? Being none, I will reread the amendment. The motion on the floor is to amend the ordinance, Section 2 of Ordinance Number 2941, adding the following language within Table A.1 as follows: New multifamily (R1, R2, and I2) occupancies in any other multi-unit residential building not meeting the definition of multifamily residential building under the State Building Code RCW 19.27.015 (for). Existing multifamily buildings undergoing substantial improvements (R1, or Bracket R1, R2, and I2) occupancies in any other multi-unit residential building not meeting the definition of multifamily residential building under the State Building Code RCW 19.27.015 (for). And amend Section 3 of Ordinance Number 2941, striking IMC 18.09.140B. And further amend Section 4 of Ordinance Number 2941, amending Central ISCA Development and Design Standards, striking Paragraph 8.13 (B), (11) electric vehicle charging parking provisions of the Central ISCA Development and Design Standards. And it's being moved in second. I'll ask the city clerk to do a roll call on this amendment, roll call vote on this amendment. Thank you. We'll be starting with Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mertz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Ayes.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven ayes, zero nays. The main motion. I just unmuted you, mayor. So that passes unanimously? The amendment passes, and we'll go back to the main motion. Are there any additional, any councilmembers who wish to comment on the main motion before we go for a roll call vote? I'm not seeing anybody else additionally in the chat. Oh, Council President Hunt?
My apologies, I chatted to the wrong person. This is Council President Hunt. I would like to make one more amendment, and this would be to strike, from the cost neutrality part of the ordinance, to strike Section 10.10D, which is the portion that reads substitution of a portion of EVSE and EV ready stalls with EV-capable stalls equivalent to the number of stalls that are no longer EVSE and EV-ready.
Do we have that one written up? Can you put that one in the chat? And is there a second? I don't have the motion. If it can be provided to me, that would be great. Maybe Council President Hunt can put it in the chat. Is there a second? Is there a second? Councilmember Martz?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to make an amendment that, to strike the language substitution of a portion of EVSE and EV-ready stalls with EV-capable stalls equivalent to the number of stalls that are no longer EVSE and EV-ready. Is there any comments or questions?
Clerk Geiger speaking. Was there a reference section of the ordinance, or an IMC that was included as well?
This is Council President Hunt. It's 10D.
So would the amendment me read to strike the language in 10D that says substitution of a portion? Would that be the appropriate way to read that?
This is Council President Hunt. That's my intent.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Council President Hunt?
Thank you. This amendment is partly to see, I partly wanted to put this out for a council's consideration. Council hadn't previously seen the cost-neutral approach, because it was added in response to concerns that were raised at our last study session. And I think that, for the most part, this cost-neutral approach for affordable housing, I think it's important to note that it was supported by Arch, and it was supported by Imagine Housing, specifically the cost-neutral aspects of it. But then, in our commissions, it seems to me, my reading of their recommendation, that they were concerned about the EV-capable part, and that would prefer to have it switch from EVSE, which means there's the equipment there, to EV-ready, which means there's still the outlet there. And again, EV-capable means there's not even any wiring. You would need to go back in and do that wiring, which would be something that the building would have to do. So this sort of removes one of the options from the cost-neutral approach, but I think it's an important way to ensure that the infrastructure is actually available for people to use. Because, again, if you switch from EV-ready to EV-capable, the infrastructure would not actually be ready until the building person decided to actually put in that wiring. So that's the intent of the amendment. The intent of the amendment is to make it so the infrastructure is truly available in an equitable way to people in affordable housing.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I was just wondering if Megan could potentially speak to the difference in cost from a developer perspective or a building perspective between EV-capable and EV-ready spots?
Yes, this is Megan. I did have that information listed in a previous packet, and I do not have it memorized, but I'm pulling it up right now.
Thank you, and I did not expect you to commit that to memory, so.
So we have that an EV-capable spot hovers around 280 to 760 per space, whereas the cost for EV-ready and EVSE are more than that, and in a different space in my memo, are closer to a thousand or so. So it is quite a bit of a savings there with EV-capable. I can continue to find that exact number, if that would be helpful.
That answers my question. I appreciate that. But if other council members are interested, they can speak up.
Thanks. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I'm a very visual person, so I'm having a hard time, since this didn't come through earlier, understanding where it is in the AB. So I'm wondering whether the clerk could show that section, and show what it looks like with the strike and replacement, because that would help me a lot.
I'd be happy to share my screen. Clerk Geiger speaking, and show you the location of that item on the screen.
That would work.
Thank you. And let me increase the font size here, so you can see it better. You said... Can you confirm that this is the paragraph?
Yes, that's right. And also, just to clarify, there was no replacement. It would be to remove this option.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, City Clerk. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments at this moment. So the amendment that's on the table is to revise Section 10D of the ordinance to strike the words "substitution of a portion of EVSE and EV-ready stalls with EV-capable stalls equivalent to the number of stalls that are no longer EVSE and EV-ready." City Clerk, can you do a roll call vote on the amendment?
Thank you. I will be calling first Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Nay.
That's five ayes and two nays.
Thank you, City Clerk. The amendment passes, five to two, and now we are back to the main motion. I'll just hold off on the chat for another 10 seconds, and see if there's any additional comments or questions. I am not seeing any, so I'm going to move back up to the main motion. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Hall again. I am just looking back again at our kind of checklist of questions to ask ourselves when we want to consider something outside of the Title 18 scope of work that's going on. And one of them was, are there trade-offs or potential conflicts with other parts of Title 18? And I don't think I can accurately answer that, so I was wondering if administration or any other council members could comment on that, where they think they have more information than I do on it. Because I'm, I guess, not comfortable voting for this without getting some more information on that one.
Let's go to City Minister Bob Quitz, and let him pick somebody to answer that question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think it's a difficult question that Councilmember Hall raises, because I think, as we've talked about, Title 18 for a long period of time, that there are portions of it that we're just not sure that we know where all the conflicts are. You know, I'll ask Megan if she has any thoughts off the top of her head. Minnie is also still on the call, and perhaps she could chime in. I think it's going to be very difficult for us to say that there's 100% no conflicts with this. I don't think that we are aware of any other substantial conflicts. Obviously, this goes into the whole area of parking. And so as we're going through, looking at parking requirements as we move through revisions of Title 18, I'd be surprised if we didn't find something. But Megan and Minnie, are you aware of any red flags as we sit here this evening?
Megan, let's start with you, and then we'll go to Director Dollywell.
This is Megan. I am not. I agree. I think as we go through Title 18, there's some things that could come up, but there's nothing that comes to mind with the review that we've done thus far.
Director Dollywell?
Yes. For the record, Minnie Dollywell, yes, I'm not aware of any conflicts, per se, at this time. However, as we get, start taking a deeper dive into Title 18, and there is a conflict that comes up, we can clean that up with the ordinance for Title 18, and we'll point that out at that time, in terms of any minor amendment that might be needed. So I don't think this precludes us from doing anything later down the road if the council chooses to adopt this tonight.
Oh, I muted myself. Okay. Thank you, Director Dollywell. Any additional questions or comments before I go back to the main motion? And I'll give it a few seconds again, keep my eye on the chat. Okay, I'm going to go up to the main motion, which is, the motion is to adopt Ordinance Number 2941, amending Sections 18.02.070 and 18.09.140 of the ISCO Municipal Code related to electric vehicle charging, and amending Chapter 8.12 and 8.13 of the Central ISCO Development and Design Standards to add electric vehicle charging. And I will go to the city clerk for a roll call vote.
Yes, and that would be the ordinance as amended. First on my list is Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember D. Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one nay.
Thank you, City Clerk. That passes, six to one. And thank you, Megan and Director Dollywell, for coming this evening. The next item of business tonight is the Closed Record of Appeal Hearing. This is AB 8136, Consolidated Appeal of Hearing Examiner's Denial of the Preliminary Platte of the High Street Collection at Issaquah Highlands. It is a quasi-judicial hearing related to APP 21-00001 and APP 21-00002. And at this time, I'd like to turn the gavel over to Council President Hunt, who will preside throughout the appeal hearing, as well as the executive session, and any action to follow. And before we start that, yes, looking at the chat, yes, we are. Before we start that next piece of business, we will be doing a five-minute recess. So when we come back, your chair for this evening will be Council President Hunt. So we are in recess at 9:03 till 9:08. See you then. till 9:08. See you then.
36 Consolidated Appeal of Hearing Examiner's Denial of the Preliminary Platte of High Street Collection at Isaguac Highlands Quasi Judicial APP 21-00001 and APP 21-00002. And I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Victoria Hunt. I'm the council president and I will be presiding over the quasi judicial appeal hearing. I will now ask Attorney Brett Vincent to give a brief introduction and to make the necessary inquiries related to the appearance of fairness.
Thank you, Councilmember, Council President. My name is Brett Vincent and I've spoken with council as well as the appellants about the process that we're going to follow today. This is a quasi judicial hearing matter and therefore the first item of business that we need to conduct is to determine on the record the appearance of fairness questions. There are a series of about three or four questions that I need to ask. I will then ask the council members and if any of you are to answer in the affirmative, please so indicate. The first question is that do any of you have any interest in the property or the application? Or if you own property within a certain distance, 300 feet of this property, subject to this application? Do any of you, do any of the council members have any interest in the property that is subject to the appeal or that is located near the property? Hearing none, we'll move to the next question. Do any of you stand to gain or lose any financial benefit as a result of the outcome of the hearing? And hearing none. Can each of you here consider the appeal in a fair and objective manner? I'm seeing head nods. All. Have any of you had any ex-party communication with either of the appellants? Ex-party communication means any contact with them since the time of the appeal, February 21st, to today's date? Any emails or any other correspondence? Great. Thank you very much. Hearing none, we'll move to the next question. Based upon the responses and in light of RCW 4236080, which requires that notice of challenges be, for appearance of fairness to be raised at, as soon as they are known, are there any, do either of the appellants have any basis on which to challenge the, any of the council members on appearance of fairness grounds? That's directed to the city and the appellate. Mr. Lell? Do you have, Mr. Lell, do you have any basis to challenge any of the council members on the appearance of fairness?
No, no objection from the department. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schneider?
No basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate both of your careful consideration of these matters. I will now give a brief introduction of the process and the ground rules for this appeal hearing, as well as a brief summary of the issues on appeal. As council members are aware, pursuant to the provisions of RCW 423600, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Essentially, the council is sitting as judges in this matter. And therefore, that they have very specific duties and instructions and responsibilities. In the Isaguac Municipal Code, Table 1804250 dash two, Table of Level 0 through 6, and Council Rule 4.15 discuss the rules for quasi judicial hearings. This type of hearing is an appeal from a denial of a plat is based upon the record that was before the hearing examiner. This is called a closed record appeal hearing. What that means is that there can be no new testimony, no new evidence brought for the council tonight. The record, the sum total of the record and the evidence and the testimony is contained in the record that was provided to the council as well as to Mr. Zell and Mr. Schneider. Mr. Zell, did you receive an email which contained the complete record of the hearing examiner's matter? Sir, I think you were on mute just temporarily there.
Pardon me, yes, I answered. I did receive the email. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Schneider, did you also receive a copy of the hearing examiner's record?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. As such, we will not take any new arguments or evidence to be presented before the council. The, this matter was based upon a hearing examiner's decision dated February 21st, 2021, wherein the city's hearing examiner denied the preliminary plat of High Street Collection at Isaguac Highlands. Both the city and IHIFC, also known as Shelter, have appealed the denial of the plat. However, Shelter also appealed the determination of vested status that the city's Development Services Director made in Section 5 of the March 3rd, 2020 staff report. Section 5 of the staff report related to the vesting determination and is generally summarized as follows. The extent of vesting for IHIFC's August 1st and 28th, 2017 preliminary plat application is limited to the use designation identified under the 1996 Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement, the IHDA, and to the substantive land use standards of the IHDA that are necessary to effectuate the specific development proposal, if any, that was identified in IHIFC's August 1st and 28th, 2017 plat application. And secondly, vesting for the IHIFC's August 1st and, August 28th, 2017 preliminary plat application is limited to substantive land use controls, does not extend to subsequent permit applications, and three, does not include post build out period submittals. As I indicated, the city council is the decision maker for these appeals. This process is going to flow as follows. Each side will have a total of 15 minutes for argument, inclusive of any rebuttal time. Each side will be responsible for ensuring that the time for rebuttal is reserved. The parties can allocate the time between the vesting appeal and the plat appeal in their discretion. The order for argument will be as follows. First, the city, then IHIFC. The city will then use its rebuttal time if any was reserved. And then IHIFC will use their rebuttal time if any is reserved. Madam Clerk has indicated that she will assist in keeping track of the argument time. So at the beginning of your arguments, Mr. Zell, Mr. Schneider, if you would just indicate how many minutes you would like to have reserved for rebuttal, Madam Clerk will assist in keeping track of that time. After IHIFC's rebuttal, there will be an opportunity for the council to ask any questions, if they have any. There are no requirements for the council to ask any questions, but if they do have some, that will be the time for which they asked. Previously to this, to this hearing, I did speak with Mr. Zell and with Mr. Schneider and indicated that the council had indicated that there was one question that they would like to have addressed during that period of time. That question relates to the Polygon development. I asked both, both appellants to take three minutes each, no more than three minutes each, to explain why the Polygon project is either applicable or not applicable in this situation. After the question period is completed, there will be 10 minutes of closing arguments in each side. Again, the city will go first and then IHIFC will go second. Once the hearing is closed, the council will recess to deliberations pursuant to RCW 423140. And the council may either affirm, remand, reverse, or modify the hearing examiner's decision based upon the record and the arguments that were presented to them tonight. We will now proceed in the orders described above. Mr. Zell, do you have any questions about the process?
Just one point of clarification, Mr. Vincent. My understanding again for your comments is that our, the parties' opportunities to address the question you identified from the council was going to be after our original presentation. Could you verify that, please?
That is correct unless they had, unless the parties had already planned to speak to that during their original presentation, they may do so. But the question will be presented for you to respond to after your original presentation. You don't have to address it in the original presentation if you do not like. You can wait until the question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schneider, any questions about the process?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now proceed with the hearing. Mr. Zell, for the city, and if you could please identify if you want to reserve any rebuttal time.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Good evening, council. Zach Lell, representing the Community Planning and Development Department. Time is limited and I will be attempting to be efficient this evening because the issues have been extensively briefed. I would like to reserve three minutes of my argument time for rebuttal. As explained in the department's appeal statement, my role here this evening is twofold. First, to explain the context and legal basis for the department's vesting determination on Shelter's plat application, which should be upheld by the city council. And second, to explain why the hearing examiner's decision denying the plat should be reversed. With respect to vesting, I'd like to make three points. The first is that the general rule of preliminary plat vesting under state law is not absolute. It's subject to several exceptions, all of which are important here. There is no vesting to procedure or process. Vesting is limited to simply substantive land use controls. Vesting does not apply to future mitigation. And vesting only applies to future land use development projects on the subject property to the extent that a specific development proposal is identified in the plat application. Separately, and most importantly, for purposes of this appeal, the general vesting rule is also limited in this context contractually by the parties' 1996 Isaguac Highlands Development Agreement. A key feature of that agreement was a 20-year build out period, after which the parties agreed that proposals could not vest. And that 20-year build out period expired on September 18th, 2017. The department's vesting determination that set forth in the staff report at Exhibit R properly reflected all of these legal parameters. The second point that I'd like to emphasize tonight is that the director's vesting determination was a correct and appropriate response to Shelter's own plat application materials. In this regard, I'd like to emphasize that the vesting determination was not made in the abstract or in a vacuum, but it was, it was a response to things that Shelter said and did. The first of those was in Shelter's own plat narrative, which it submitted concurrently with its preliminary plat application in August of 2017. In that plat narrative, Shelter unilaterally and broadly attempts to vest all future development on the property to the standards, mitigation, et cetera, of the development agreement without identifying any particular development proposal. And here, Shelter essentially attempted to write the city's staff report for itself. And I would respectfully direct the council's attention to Exhibits 1.2, 1.3, 2.4, and 6.3, which make this point very clear. In short, there is no Washington legal authority that supports this approach. The second point I'd like to emphasize, what Shelter did or attempted to do was to depict building footprints in construction level detail in its various plat materials after the build out period of the development agreement had expired. This is content that goes far beyond the definition and the purpose of a preliminary plat under state law, which is a, supposed to be a neat and approximate drawing of a subdivision, nothing more and nothing less. Depicting this level of detail on a plat addressing future buildings, future development, encroaches into separate future permit stages of the city's regulatory approval framework, specifically site development and construction permits. Again, the key point here for vesting purposes under the agreement is that these submittals all occurred during a time where the parties had contractually agreed that project applications could not vest. From staff's perspective, Shelter's intent was very clear in doing these things. It was attempting to use its plat application to vest its future buildings in a way that was inconsistent with state law and not allowed under the development agreement's build out period framework. And because Shelter was attempting to do this in the context of its plat application and not through some separate document, it was necessary for the department to address this issue squarely and head on in the staff report, including the vesting determination that it made for the plat. Simply ignoring this concern would have been tantamount to kicking the can down the road and avoiding staff's responsibility. Under these circumstances, the director's vesting determination ultimately concluded that Shelter was vested to the development agreement for those aspects of its development proposal that were submitted to the city before the build out period expired. And this is in keeping with a often repeated aspect of Washington plat vesting law, that what is vested is what is sought in the plat application itself. Stated differently, as a plat applicant, you vest to the substantive land use standards that are necessary to implement and effectuate the specific development proposal that you have identified in your plat application. The third and final point I'd like to make regarding vesting tonight is that the city's staff agrees with both Shelter and the hearing examiner that multiple iterations of a plat application are a normal, regular process or component of a process during the plat review stage. And this sort of give and take and back and forth does not operate to deprive the original plat application of its vested status. We concur about that. But what a plat applicant cannot do is use these subsequent submittals to radically expand the scope of its vested rights to include future site development that will be subject to separate regulatory review processes. Even if this was permissible under state law, and I would respectfully suggest that it is not, allowing that result would directly contravene the clear purpose and legal effect of the build out period under the 1996 Development Agreement. Now, this does not mean that the plat application should be denied. Quite the contrary. What it does mean is that future site development on the property, including future buildings, are not vested to the development agreement standards and will instead need to be reviewed against and ultimately satisfy the applicable provisions of the city's code. As indicated in the revised version of the department's proposed conditions of approval for this plat, and those are in the record and were submitted on August 10th, 2020, this outcome can most effectively be addressed through conditions that clarify future site development, including future buildings, are not vested to the development agreement standards and will instead be reviewed against the city's applicable regulations. This is the result that the council should reach in addressing Shelter's appeal of the director's vesting determination. With respect to the city's appeal of the plat denial by the hearing examiner, I'll be very brief because I think the issues here are very clear and the outcome is dictated very clearly by your own code and by Washington law. There is simply no evidence or testimony in the record that supports denial of this plat. The hearing examiner felt impeded or confused or somehow prevented from reaching a substantive approval decision on the plat based on the city's vesting determination. But that was an error on his part because the hearing examiner himself had no jurisdiction over vesting. He should have simply analyzed the plat application within the parameters that had been established by the director, the one official in the city who does have authority to issue vesting determinations. And if the examiner had done that, the application would have been approved for the simple reason that there is no evidence or testimony that supports denial. The case law relevant to this issue does not support the denial of this plat. Denial of a plat is appropriate only where the plat does not meet the relevant standards for approval. And here again, no evidence indicates that the plat should not have been approved. And there is no meaningful argument And there is no meaningful argument between the parties regarding the basic elements of plat approval, things like lot size, lot configuration, basic use standards, compliance, CIPA mitigation, et cetera. That is virtually uncontested in this case. And the examiner's decision did not identify any specific standard that Shelter's proposed plat could not or did not meet. The sole basis of the examiner's denial decision was instead the generic public use and interest criterion of the state subdivision statute. Washington case law is very clear that that standard in and of itself is an insufficient basis to deny a plat. I'd like to be very clear, though, for the record, that it is not staff's position or intent tonight to cascade or cast dispersions or otherwise attack the hearing examiner. As you can see from the decision that he issued on February 1st, he's a very thorough, very methodical, and very conscientious professional. And in point of fact, he's ruled almost uniformly in the city's favor throughout the three-year history of this dispute. We have no doubt that his frustration that he sensed was sincere. But with all respect, I do believe that the forest here was likely mist for the trees. If the examiner felt that the department's position on vesting was unclear or concerning in any manner that would have prevented him from fulfilling his own decisional function, the proper recourse should have been for him to request clarification from the director at some point during the several months that the city's staff report was physically in front of him. Simply denying approval of an uncontested plat application under these circumstances is not the constructive or otherwise legally correct outcome. In closing, I'd just like to note, as the council is very aware, this has been a very heated, very difficult dispute over the last three years, and the city has disagreed with Shelter holdings on many aspects of their development projects, including vested status. But this case involves a very rare circumstance where both parties agree, and their point of agreement is that the Shelter plat should be approved. And this is the result that the city council should reach, preferably through a directed remand to the examiner or an outright reversal decision with a new decision substituted for the one that the examiner issued on February 1st. And I'd be very happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Other than that, I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you. Clerk Decker speaking. There was one minute of unused time, so that would be four minutes remaining.
Thank you.
Uh, I would like to share a PowerPoint, and my share button is not working. If that could be authorized, please.
I will hand you that ability now.
Can the council see the, the document I'm sharing?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lell has spoken for ten-odd minutes now and did not once address, explain...
Excuse me. Uh, can you indicate how much time you'd like on the clock or how much you're reserving?
Yeah, thank you. I will reserve two minutes for rebuttal, please.
All right. Give me a moment to reset the clock here. And again, you said you went 13 minutes at this time, reserving two?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I'm starting the time now.
Thank you. Mr. Lell spoke and did not once address the statute that is at issue in this appeal, which is the state vesting statute at 5817033, which I've called up here. In my remarks this evening, I'm going to talk about this statute and its meaning, and I'm going to talk about how the administration has applied this statute differently to Shelter than it is asking you to apply it, or to, applied it differently to Polygon than it is asking you to apply it to Shelter. So this is the statute at issue that Mr. Lell did not address. "A proposed division of land," and I've highlighted the key words, "shall be considered under the land use control ordinances in effect on the land at the time a fully completed application for preliminary plat has been submitted." This statute has been in place since 1987. It is undisputed that Shelter, my client, submitted a fully complete application in August of 2017. This statute could not be simpler. It requires the division of land, the decision that you are being asked to make about the preliminary plat be considered under the regulations that were in effect in August of 2017. Those regulations were the development agreement. The city, in approving an application that Polygon submitted in July of 2017, two weeks before Shelter submitted its application, agreed that Shelter was vested to the development agreement and proceeded to process Shelter's plat application under the procedures in the development agreement and to recommend approval to this council to approve the plat as vested under the development agreement. This is highlighted language. It's from Exhibit LL of the Urban Village Development Commission that says, "Even though the Highlands Development Agreement was terminated by action of this council on March 28th of 2018 and replacement regulations have been enacted, this application was vested to the now terminated development agreement and was reviewed under those regulations." This council accepted the UVDC's recommendation and approved the plat by a 7-0 vote in July of 2017 as vested to the development agreement that the administration today is attempting to deny that Shelter is vested to. This is the staff report for Shelter's plat. It's from Section 6 of the plat, or, excuse me, of the vesting determination. Section 6 is the portion of the staff report that immediately follows the vesting determination that Mr. Lell spoke about at length. And this tells you what the administration is asking you to approve and agree to. The right-hand column are the portions of the development agreement that the administration has decided that Shelter's plat is not vested to. Uh, and the left-hand column is the portion of the development agreement that the administration is asserting that Shelter is vested to. But the statute that I showed you, 5817033, says Shelter is vested to the development agreement, not to the replacement regulations that the staff report is asking you to apply. This is an excerpt from the staff report, the same staff for Polygon's plat, the plat that you approved under the development agreement in 2017. Exhibit B is the land use standards that the staff report for Shelter's plat said Shelter is not vested to. In the staff report for Polygon's plat, staff said, yes, Polygon is vested and analyzed how it complied with the, that portion of the development agreement. In fact, the staff report for Poly's gon's plat went through and analyzed the compliance of the plat with all of the standards in the development agreement that the administration is saying Shelter is not vested to. So how did the administration end up taking such a different approach to Shelter than it took to Polygon? And why is it asking you to bless such a differential approach? The staff report, this is Section 5 of the staff report, the section that Mr. Lell talked about, says Section 6, the section that says the replacement regulations apply to Shelter's plat, that that Section 6 results from this analysis. So the administration is telling you that the vesting determination leads to the violation of Shelter's vested rights in Section 6 of the staff report because you cannot apply the replacement regulations to a plat that is vested under RCW 5817033 because it plainly says the regulations in effect in July of 2017, when the application was submitted, are the regulations that apply to the plat. This is a site plan and, and a satellite photo that illustrates Shelter's property and the Polygon property for which the plat was approved by this council. This is an old satellite photo because it looks, makes it look like all of the land is undeveloped. Well, this is true of Shelter's property. It is as vacant and unusable today as it was when the satellite photo was taken. But Polygon's plat was approved by this council, the preliminary plat, in the summer of 2018. It has now obtained final plat approval because the infrastructure is in place and Polygon is proceeding to build homes. The property in the middle that is identified as the Polygon Westridge, Westridge Town Homes North, SDP, is another Polygon application, which is, Polygon is proceeding full speed ahead with pursuant to an SDP application that the administration acknowledged was vested to the development agreement. The vesting determination that you're being asked to uphold denies that Shelter's applications are vested, SDP applications are similarly vested, even though there is no material difference in the facts between Shelter's application and Polygon's application. Polygon submitted its, its SDP application in the fall of 2017, just as Shelter did, but the administration divested Shelter's applications by letter in April of 2018. It did not divest Polygon's applications, and in fact, it approved Polygon's SDP applications five weeks after it divested Shelter's. The administration's attempt to apply the replacement regulations to Shelter's plat and to its SDP applications has led to all sorts of absurdity. And that absurdity is demonstrated in the record before you. In the staff report, the administration asserts that it only reviewed the materials that were submitted in August of 2017, and yet the staff report talks about materials that were submitted after that. Similarly, the administration's representative at the plat hearing said she had only reviewed the plans that were submitted in August of 2017, and yet she asked the hearing examiner to make changes to the plans that Shelter had submitted in March of 2019 in response to the administration's comments. There is no principled way to reconcile what the administration is attempting to do to Shelter with what it has done to Polygon or with the vesting statute 5817033, which could not be simpler and which Mr. Lell did not address. This is the other statute that the administration has been flouting since 2017. 5817140 requires the city to have made a decision on Shelter's preliminary plat within 90 days of its submittal in August of 2017. We are now three and a half years on and counting. And there is evidence in the record that demonstrates the hundreds and hundreds of days that the administration did nothing, took no action on Shelter's application, uh, even though it was required to act in, no later than November of 2017. And if the administration had complied with this statute and taken action in November of 2017, there wouldn't be any vesting issue for you to resolve because that was months before this council adopted the replacement regulations. The Washington Supreme Court has said that this statute, which has been in place since the 1970s, is also a vesting statute. Before 5817033, which I've been talking about, was enacted in 1987, the Washington Supreme Court in a case called Norco Construction versus King County in 1982, said that this statute requires the local government to make a decision on the 90th day after an application is submitted in light of the regulations in effect on that 90th day. Well, once again, those regulations were the development agreement, not the replacement regulations. The statute could not be simpler. Anything submitted in support of an application is part of that application and has to be reviewed and considered under the regulations to which an applicant is vested. Mr. Lell has talked at great length about the development agreement, which has nothing to do with vesting under 5817033. Development agreements are authorized by a different part of the RCW 58, or 3670B170. We completely disagree with his interpretation of the development agreement, which requires him to read a single sentence out of context and ignore fundamental principles of statutory construction. But you don't have to reach any of that because it has nothing to do with vesting under 5817033, which is the issue before you and which Mr. Lell has not addressed. It's too late to, for you as the city council, to undo the three and a half years of delay that the administration has caused for Shelter's application, which has led to the property sitting unused and unusable while Polygon proceeds with its applications. But you're being asked to make a quasi-judicial decision tonight, and you can put an end to the administration's violation of Shelter's vested rights by making a quasi-judicial decision, applying 5817033 to undisputed facts. And those undisputed facts are the fact that Shelter vested in August of 2017 and that is submitted material since then that have to be reviewed under the development agreement that was in effect in 2017.
That's time.
If you make that decision, a quasi-judicial decision, you will overrule the vesting determination and approve the plat as Shelter is asking that it be approved. Thank you.
City, would you like to, Mr. Zell, would you like to now have your rebuttal time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vincent.
And Madam Clerk, how much, how much time was left? Four minutes?
Thank you. Yes, four minutes. Let me reset the clock here, please. Ready.
Thank you again, counsel. Again, Zach Lell on behalf of the, of the department. Um, I'd like to address a few of the points that Mr. Schneider made in his presentation to you. The first point that I'd like to address and the most overriding issue is his contention, and I'm paraphrasing here, that the development agreement has nothing to do with vesting. I don't believe that there is anything that could be further from the truth in relation to this dispute. And I would respectfully ask the council to read with your own eyes the provisions of the development agreement that govern this issue specifically, and those are Sections 3.2, 3.2, and Sections 5.13. And I don't believe that you need to take my word for that. You can also read the hearing examiner's decision dismissing Shelter's previous motion for summary judgment and granting the city's motion for summary judgment that was issued in the fall of 2019. That's also contained in the record here. And that decision solidly refutes Mr. Schneider's argument concerning the effective vesting under the development agreement. I would also respectfully direct the council's attention to the governing statute for development agreements, RCW 3670B170. One of the key points that a development agreement can contain under that statute is a vesting or build-out period, and that is precisely what the 1996 Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement did. And in this context, the parties are afforded the opportunity under state law to determine the length and extent of vesting contractually. That is what they have done here, and that is something that Shelter's position in this appeal simply disregards. I'd also like to draw your attention to... I'd also like to draw your attention to a point that Mr. Schneider's presentation did not address, and that is Shelter's own application materials and the extent to which they attempted to gratuitously vest future development on the property. And here I'd like to read a brief quote from Exhibit B63, which is Shelter's plat narrative. Quote, "Pursuant to Section 3.2.3 and 6 of the development agreement, a plat is an implementing approval which vests to the development standards established in the development agreement. Therefore, future development proposals within this plat shall be vested to the development standards under the development agreement." That is a statement that is contained in at least three versions of Shelter's plat materials that were submitted to the city from August of 2017 through March of 2019. And you see there a very naked attempt by this developer to overreach in its vested rights approach and extend the plat vesting that it's entitled to, and that we don't contest, to future development proposals that hadn't even been proposed yet. That simply has no basis in state law, and it is fundamentally at odds with the vesting framework under your development agreement. The final point that I'd like to make has to do with Mr. Schneider's allegations of the delay that occurred in the processing of the plat. And while he's correct that there is evidence in the record that Shelter was able to submit that supports, at least facially, Shelter's delay argument, what is missing from Mr. Schneider's presentation is the fact that the hearing examiner prevented the city staff from refuting those arguments. And I will represent to you that the staff came to the August 3, 2020 hearing prepared to do just that and to offer its own rebuttal testimony and evidence.
That is time.
So I understand I have about 90 seconds left.
Clerk Eggers, you were on mute if you were speaking.
Thank you. I'm resetting the clock now to one minute 50 seconds.
Thank you. Mr. Lell spoke in rebuttal, but he did not once even mention, let alone explain, the administration's violation of 5817033. He has now spoken for 15 minutes and not once even acknowledged the existence of that statute, let alone attempted to explain how the administration has complied with it. He refers again to the development agreement, and I made it very clear that we profoundly disagree with Mr. Lell's interpretation of the development agreement, but you don't have to reach that issue because we are not asking you tonight to do anything other than acknowledge the simple, straightforward, unequivocal language of 5817033 that the administration is violating with its divesting determination that it is asking you to uphold and with the plat conditions that it is asking you to also uphold. It wants you to approve a plat subject to replacement regulations with 5817033 simply says you cannot do. There's been absolutely no response to that argument because there is none. The city is violating, the administration is violating 5817033, and you have the opportunity tonight to put an end to that. I want to conclude by referring to Mr. Lell's comment about Shelter attempting to present information to the city about its future intended use of the plat. Tiaheim testified at the hearing in front of the hearing examiner that that was in the application because then Director Niven suggested that it be there. There is absolutely nothing inappropriate about an applicant explaining to a city its intended use of a plat because it helps inform the city so that they know what they are reviewing.
That is time.
I'd like to thank both appellants for their arguments. This is now a time where the council has questions, can ask questions if they would like. As I indicated, one question that a council has determined that they would like to ask was related to Polygon. As you are aware, the city council has been reviewing the record, has been reviewing the hearing examiner's decision, and based upon that review, prior to tonight's hearing, they had formulated this question, which I presented to both of you previously. That was related to Polygon. And the question for the department is why is the Polygon project not applicable in this situation? And we've heard Mr. Schneider's presentation where he believes that it is. He can have additional time if you would like to explain that as well. Both sides will have three minutes. Mr. Zell will go first, and then Mr. Schneider, if you'd like to elaborate further, could also take his three minutes. There will be no rebuttal. It is a straight three minutes. Mr. Lell.
Thank you again, Zach Lell on behalf of the department. I'm very happy to answer that question for the council, and the short answer is the city's made a mistake, an inadvertent mistake, in processing the Polygon plat in 2018. As the city staff testified during the Shelter plat hearing, the city did not discover that it had erred in this regard during the actual processing of the Polygon plat, and no one challenged the city at that point or otherwise raised this as an issue as the Polygon plat was being processed. The reference to that is at the hearing examiner's decision at Page 33, finding number 57. It's also important, though, to provide some explanatory context there that unlike Shelter's plat, the Polygon plat was actually in process before the city adopted ordinance number 2830 that adopted the replacement regulations. In fact, not only the staff report for the Polygon plat, but also the first installment of the public hearing for that plat occurred before the replacement regulations became effective and before the development agreement had been formally terminated. So hopefully the council can understand and provide some context to staff's inadvertent mistake in that regard. There was certainly no deliberate discrimination, and staff testified to that effect at the Shelter hearing. But the main point and the issue that I would like to drive home in answer to the council's question is that it does not matter what the city did in regard to the Polygon plat. State case law is very clear that municipalities are not bound or otherwise constrained by their prior administrative decisions in any regard. This is an unbroken line of Washington precedent that dates back almost 50 years, and I will just recite for the council's edification some of the many cases that hold this. Steiman versus City of Mercer Island, Fuchelle versus the Department of Ecology, Northlake Marine Works versus the Department of Natural Resources, Dixtra versus Skagit County. These are all controlling Washington cases that govern this issue precisely, and this is a benchmark principle of Washington land use law. It's also rooted in the public interest to ensure that municipalities are not bound and legally required to keep repeating their mistakes once they realize that a mistake has occurred. So in short answer to the council's question, the Polygon plat is utterly irrelevant to the Shelter plat proceedings, and it should not bear on your decision tonight at all. Be happy to answer any other questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lell. Mr. Schneider, do you have any remarks?
Yes, thank you. The case law that Mr. Lell cites at most means that the city is not required to recognize that someone has vested to process. Nothing in the case law and nothing in the city's code prohibits a city from extending vested rights to process. And the city, the administration extended that procedural right to Polygon, and the equal protection clauses of the federal and state constitutions say you can't, you have to apply the same laws in the same way to similarly situated people. Having extended vesting to the process for Polygon, the city administration was required to do that for Shelter. Mr. Lell's comments also are directed entirely to process, not to substance, and the administration substantively reviewed and approved Polygon's applications under the development agreement, and it is substantively attempting to review and approve Shelter's application under the replacement regulations set out on Page 12 of the staff report that I screen shared with you earlier this evening. There is absolutely no basis for the city to have treated Polygon one way and Shelter another, both substantively and procedurally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Members of council, do any of you have any questions? If you do, can you follow the normal process for notifying Council President Hunt if you Council President, do you see anybody seeking to ask any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. I do not see any council members indicating that they would like to ask a question.
Thank you. We will now proceed to closing arguments. As I indicated previously, closing arguments are going to be 10 minutes each. The city will go first, and then IHIFC will conclude.
Thank you again, counsel. Zach Lell on behalf of the department. I'll be hopefully very brief. There's a simple reason why the approach to vesting taken in the city's staff report is, at least to Mr. Schneider's perspective, unusual, and that is because it was compelled to be that way by virtue of what Shelter said and what Shelter did in its application materials. It was a necessary response to a very clear overreach by a developer that was attempting to extend its vested rights beyond the scope of any boundaries recognized under the state law or the party's development agreement. There's also an extremely unique factor to all of this based on the simple fact that we are dealing with a development agreement in the first instance. The state statute that authorizes contracts of this type was adopted by the state legislature in 1995. The Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement in 1996 was one of the very first contracts, if not the first, contract that was executed, negotiated, and implemented under the authority of that statute. And the short answer is it's a relatively recent period, and there simply has not been much case law that has grown up around that issue because of its relative novelty. But the key point there is that unlike the run-of-the-mill standard vesting situation, the parties to a development agreement have the ability, under state law, to define the duration and extent of vesting through their written contract, and that's what they did here. And there's one thing that I think has been missing in the discussion this evening by both parties admittedly, and that is the rules for interpretation, whether it's the rules for interpreting the city's ordinances, the city's replacement regulations, or the vesting provisions and other aspects of the development agreement. And the overriding rule of interpretation in this contracts, whether you're looking at a contract or whether you're looking at a local ordinance or other land use standard, is to try to obtain and understand and glean the underlying intent of that provision. So the question then becomes, what did the city council intend when it negotiated and approved the 1996 development agreement and the build-out period framework that was such a central feature to that? What did the council mean and intend when it adopted the replacement regulations for the Issaquah Highlands in the spring of 2018? Well, your staff doesn't make policy in that regard. What your staff is tasked with doing is serving as a steward of the local development process. Staff doesn't make code. Staff doesn't approve agreements. Staff interprets and enforces and administers them, and that is what your staff has done here to the best of its ability. It has essentially attempted to put itself in your shoes and try to understand and effectuate what you and your predecessors on the council dais intended when you and your predecessors approved the 1996 development agreement. And the staff's vesting determination in the staff report for Shelter's plat is staff's best effort, best attempt at effectuating that intent. Ultimately, you as council members are the ultimate arbiters of your code, and you're the ultimate decision makers when it comes to this appeal. The only decisional body, the only officials in the city that have the ability to modify, overrule, change, or even uphold the director's vesting determination are you. The hearing examiner didn't have that power, but you do. So the question for you in reviewing this issue, along with your legal counsel, is what did you and your predecessors intend by adopting that development agreement? And was the city's vesting determination correct under the circumstances that you've seen in the record and that I've described for you tonight? Ultimately, staff will defer to your position on that, but I'd like it to be clear for the record that the department did not have any animosity, or for that manner, any particular affinity, for Shelter's plat. Again, it's not staff's role to do that. Staff simply serves as the administrative wing of the city's government, and that's what it attempted to do here. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, but for the reasons that I've previously discussed, it is the staff's position and request that you uphold the city's vesting determination and that you reverse the examiner's denial of Shelter's plat application. Because again, at the end of the day, even though the city disagrees with Shelter regarding the extent of vesting for its development application, there is no disagreement that the plat itself should be approved, and that is the ultimate result that I would ask that you make tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Eggers, I'd like to share a couple more slides, please, if you could give me the capability of doing so again. Okay. Thank you. This again is the statute that the administration's attorney refuses to address. It could not be more simple. The preliminary plat, which you have yet to approve, has to be considered under the development agreement, the substantive standards in the development agreement that were in place in the summer of 2017. And the only reason, excuse me, this is 140, 033 is the one we've been talking about. And as I said earlier, it's too late to undo the three and a half years of delay, but it's not too late for you to make a quasi-judicial decision that is consistent with 033. So this is a copy of the city's notice of application for Shelter's plat. The city administration gave notice of Shelter's application on the same day in December of 2017 that it gave notice of Polygon's plat application, and both of them, both Polygon's and Shelter's included the language that I've highlighted on this slide, that the preliminary determination is that the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement applies, well, it's the final determination under 5817033, and that the city council is the decision maker for the preliminary plat application. Well, you, the city council, were the decision maker for Shelter's preliminary, excuse me, for Polygon's preliminary plat application based on a recommendation by the UVDC, but under the replacement regulations that the administration has applied to Shelter, the hearing examiner was the decision maker based on a staff recommendation, and it's before you only because of the cross appeals. You would not be involved under the replacement regulations but for the appeals, whereas you were involved as the original decision maker when it came to Polygon's plat application. This is the site plan that was included in that notice of application on December 27 of 2017 that shows the proposed lots and the proposed development of those lots. And as I mentioned a short while ago in response to one of Mr. Lell's And as I mentioned a short while ago in response to one of Mr. Lell's comments, Mr. Niven encouraged Shelter to provide this information about its intended use of the plat. And any applicant for a plat would provide information about intended use, and any normal city would be grateful for such information because it would allow the city to evaluate the impacts of the plat. This site plan, which was part of the notice of application in 2017, is virtually identical to the site plan in the approved, in the plans that you are being asked to approve today. There has been no material change in the plat over those three and a half years. These are proposed findings that are Exhibit WW14 in the record. We are asking you to adopt these findings. We agree with Mr. Lell that you should approve the plat. We profoundly disagree with Mr. Lell that you should approve the plat as recommended by the administration, subject to the replacement regulations instead of subject to the development agreement to which the plat is vested. So we ask that you adopt these proposed findings, which ensure consistency with the vested development agreement. Then the administration also proposed conditions, and Shelter submitted this document to the hearing examiner. It's WW15. This is one page of a much longer document that goes through and takes the administration's proposed conditions and either accepts them, deletes them, or proposes changes to them every time with an explanation. The administration has not responded to this, and we ask that you consider these proposed conditions and adopt them as proposed by Shelter because they will make the plat conditions consistent with the development agreement to which the plat is vested. We're here tonight because the hearing examiner was caught between a rock and a hard place. The vesting determination that Mr. Lell is asking you to uphold said the rest of the staff report, including the application of the replacement regulations to Shelter, is required by the vesting determination, and you, Mr. Hearing Examiner, have no authority to disagree with this vesting determination made by the staff. So the hearing examiner was being told he had to comply with that vesting determination. But the hearing examiner knew he also had to comply with state law, and he could not comply with state law and comply with the vesting determination because he knew they were incompatible. And that's what his decision talks about at length in its discussion of the case law and what he refers to as the administration's highly problematic position. You cannot -- they are not compatible. The vesting determination, which applies the replacement regulations to Shelter's plat, is not compatible with state law. The hearing examiner could not violate the vesting determination without violating state law and could not comply with that state law without violating the vesting determination. So he threw up his hands in despair, denied the plat, and presented the issue to all of you. But you cannot do what the hearing examiner did because you are not bound by the vesting determination. You have to decide whether it's correct, and therefore you have to decide whether you are going to participate in what I submit is a clear and years-long denial of Shelter's vested rights by the administration by approving the plat subject to the replacement regulations, which is what the administration is asking you to do, or approve the plat subject to the development agreement, which is what Shelter is asking you to do. It's a quasi-judicial decision. The law is clear. 5817033 has not been responded to in any fashion by the administration, and the facts are clear. Shelter vested in 2017. The only reason it's taken three and a half years to get to you is because of the delay on the part of the administration. But the law is clear. Shelter is vested, and we are asking you to approve the plat subject to the conditions and findings that Shelter has proposed and to overrule the vesting determination. And more specifically, we ask three things: that you reverse the director's vesting determination and recognize that not only the plat, but the SDP and ASDP applications that Shelter submitted are vested by virtue of the plat; that you reject the administration's implementation of the vesting determination that subjects Shelter's plat to replacement regulations; and that you approve the plat with findings and conditions proposed by Shelter, and that you do so without a remand to the hearing examiner. The record is before you. You have the authority to go ahead, and a remand to the hearing examiner is both unnecessary and would cause additional delay. So we ask you to apply the law to the facts, the clear law of 5817033, to undisputed facts, and approve the plat as recommended by Shelter in the findings of proposed conditions that I just presented to you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and thank you very much for your attention this evening.
Thank you, both appellants. Given the nature of this, I know that council had already had one opportunity to ask any questions, but I would like to just ask one more time if council, after hearing the closing arguments, have any questions for either side.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent, and I will look to the chat. So if any council members do have any questions, please indicate in the chat. We do have a question from Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is just something that's been nagging at me, so I guess I had better ask the question. I always thought that equal protection under the law applied to individuals and not to Can I get some enlightenment on that? Does equal protection under the law apply to corporations as well as individuals?
If we could -- I'm sorry, Mr. Schneider. If we could just give both sides an opportunity to respond, would one minute each be appropriate? Thank you. Mr. Schneider, would you go first?
It's certainly my understanding that it applies to any entity, whether a natural person or a corporate person that is subject to the law. A local government or any government cannot apply the same law differently to people who are similarly situated, and there is no material difference between Shelter and Polygon when they submitted their plat applications and when they submitted their SDP applications.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Mr. Lell?
In short, the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Vincent, I do not see any other council members that are indicating they would like to ask questions.
Thank you. Madam President, if you want to close the hearing, and then we can proceed to closed deliberations pursuant to state law.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. I will momentarily close the hearing. I did want to indicate, though, that we will be having executive session later, but we also have one more item of business on our regular agenda, so I will be also doing that, is my understanding. Is that correct, Clerk Eggers?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, the consolidated appeal hearing is now closed, and we will go on to the next item of business, which is good of the order. And I will ask if any council members have anything for good of the order at this time, if they would indicate in the chat. Councilmember March?
As I feared, the hour has gotten late, and I would prefer not to dig into a conversation about county fees right at the moment. So I would ask, the packet, the SCA pick packet is available. I believe it goes out to everybody if you are interested in the topic. I see some heads nodding no, so I will forward the pick packet on to the rest of my fellow council members. If you want to take a look at the county fees line item, pick is very good about teeing these questions up for us. So if you have any thoughts or comments, if you could give it back to me before the 14th, I would appreciate it. Thank you. That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember March. And I see that we have two more good of the order. First is Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you, and I'll be brief, too, since it's late. We received an email regarding the availability of bathroom facilities in downtown Isaguah, and I did appreciate the research that was done by staff and the email that went back to that correspondent. But I've heard this from many different people, and I think it's becoming a greater concern. So I just wanted to put it out there that this might be a good test for whatever procedure we want to use to get council items on the agendas, because I would be interested in going a little bit deeper into that issue and seeing what we can do, particularly as we get closer to summer and perhaps have more people sleeping outdoors because the weather's getting nicer. So I'll just put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I just really quickly wanted to, you know, since earlier we adopted the creation of the new ad hoc committee to review our council rules and procedures, I just wanted to really quickly thank councilmembers DeMichele Goodman and Walsh, I believe, are the three that we appointed to that. So I just wanted to thank you for volunteering to do that, and I'm looking forward to seeing your work.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I believe that is all council members who have indicated that they have something for good of the order. I have some upcoming council meetings to describe. There is a city council study session Tuesday, April 13. Facilities assessments and draft evaluation criteria and surplus policy will be discussed. Special city council meeting following the study session on April 13. Potential agenda items include continued deliberations of the consolidated appeal of hearing examiner's denial of the preliminary plat of High Street Collection at Isaguah Highlands, and then city council regular meeting on April 19. Potential agenda items to include the 2022 to 2027 capital improvement plan, including transportation improvement program. And then the last item on the agenda this evening is our executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session this evening for deliberations related to AB 8136, consolidated appeal of the hearing examiner's denial of the preliminary plat of High Street Collection at Isaguah Highlands per RCW 42.30.140 (2). The item is expected to take approximately 60 minutes and may be extended if needed. Action is anticipated to follow an open session. As a reminder, executive sessions are closed to the public. We will now recess into executive session at 10:24 PM. And I will ask the clerk to move the city council into a separate session within this meeting. Anyone who is not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.
Council President? If I may just have one question. I know previously we had indicated that we wanted to do deliberations for an hour. I think that was before all of us knew that we'd be going into deliberations at 10:20. It would be perfectly appropriate for the council to reduce that time at this time, as you had indicated, we are coming back on the 13th. So if you wanted to, if council wanted to entertain a shorter deliberation period, I would understand. So...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vincent. My apologies. I think so then, in that case, I would have to indicate that it would take approximately a different amount of time.
Correct.
Correct. And that still provides you the opportunity to extend further if needed, but at this point, you wouldn't be able to take action until the hour mark at the soonest.
Okay. But I can still correct it?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. I think then, council, given the late hour, 30 minutes, would that be okay with council? I'm seeing, I think, some head nods. So in that case, this item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes and may be extended if needed. And I believe I am now ready to recess into executive session at 10:26 PM.
Thank you. And if you can provide me a moment to move individuals to our green room, that would be great. And we are not in the official executive session quite yet, but thank you.
Thank you.[1507.46] Thank you.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we have this part on recording.
Thank you for allowing him the time to set up his CV connection for recording.
Okay, thank you. So, Clerk Eggers, to confirm, we are back on recording?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are back in open session at 10:59 p.m. And I will, at this time, move to continue deliberations on AB 8136 to a special City Council meeting of April 13, 2021, beginning at 7:30 p.m., or at the conclusion of the study session that precedes the special meeting, whichever is later. Whichever is later.
Second.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Okay, I am seeing none. Clerk Eggers, if you could please take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Starting with Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Thank you. That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. And there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 11:01 p.m.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.